Can I ask you people to take your seats, please, so we can begin? Thank you. I'd like to welcome you all to the December 6, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Rosler, will you lead us in the pledge?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Shirley, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Carroll.
Here.
Chairman Kramer.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Commissioner Garretson.
Commissioner Jackal.
Commissioner Rosler.
Commissioner Looney.
Student Commissioner Aguedo.
And Student Commissioner Cranford.
Thank you. Commissioners, before you are the minutes from the November 16, 2016, meeting. Are there any changes that need to be made to those minutes? If not, may I see a motion, please?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Commissioner Rosler.
I'll second the motion.
Please let the record show that the minutes from the November 16, 2016, meeting passed without change with Commissioner Carroll abstaining. Mr. Winters, are there any agenda changes for this evening? Thank you. The first thing that we have on our agenda this evening is for people to speak on items that are not on this evening's agenda. And I have one speaker slip. Al Brown, if you'd like to come and address us, please.
Good evening, and thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you. I would like to follow up on the Breeze Hill project. Sadly, the City Council did not take your recommendation for an EIR. Some felt it punitive, others didn't even consider it. Most were just plain scared by aggressive threats of a lawsuit by the developer. Only one council member had the courage to support your decision. The project was approved by a four-to-one vote, with only Deputy Mayor Amanda Rigby in opposition. Clearly, this zone change should have never been granted in the first place, and the city did have the power to at least put conditions on the project to reduce its impact on our neighborhood. It was a very sad day for our neighborhood and for Vista. But what I'd like to share with you tonight is some lessons learned over the last 18 months, and hopefully you will find something in this to help you in your very thankless and difficult job sometimes as a planning commissioner. Number one, you have more power than you think. When projects come in front of you and they don't meet the general plan or design guidelines, please call it out and stand your ground. There's more to a project approval than checking the boxes. The general plan is a constitution for the future development of our city and should be honored as such. Two, if you have the opportunity to put conditions on a project to make sure it meets the highest intent of the design guidelines in the general plan, please do so. While we really appreciate that the EIR seemed to be a good way to address the myriad of issues surrounding the Breeze Hill project, by not putting conditions on the project, it allowed the City Council to deny the EIR and pass the project as is. Our neighborhood will now suffer the consequences of this project forever. No going back, no do-overs, no recourse. We're stuck with a building that is too tall, does not fit our community character, and heaven knows where all the tenants will park, not to mention traffic and safety issues. Number three, please listen. When the community takes the time to come to these meetings, please really carefully listen to their concerns. These are our homes, our neighborhoods, and your decisions affect the lives of so very many for so very long. Have discussions on the dais. Ask follow-up questions of the community. Contact the community and go out to the site ahead of time. I know a lot of you already do that, but it's so important. And please think holistically about projects. What else is going on in the area? And what power do you have to effect? We rely on your judgment to make sure that developments are following all design guidelines in the general plan, and not just that staff says it checks the boxes. If that's the only criteria that a project needs to be approved in Vista, why do we bother to have a public process? It only makes a mockery of citizen involvement and further erodes the public trust in government. What we do know is that some developers will threaten to sue the city if they don't get what they want. All we're asking is that you do the right thing for current citizens and future generations. But finally, and thank you, I would like to say thank you to each and every one of you for all of the hours that you spent listening to our concerns. We feel that you sincerely tried to do the right thing for our neighborhood, and we will not, we won't forget that. Thank you very much, and hopefully, from what we've learned from this project, this type of zone change won't happen again, and this type of project will never be approved in Vista in the future. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, the first item on our agenda this evening is Omni Financial LLC. Mr. Winters, you want to give us the presentation, please?
Thank you, Chairman Kramer, and Commissioners. This project is for an annexation pre-zoning tentative subdivision map proposed by Omni Financial LLC, project number 6-061. The project consists of an annexation request into the city of Vista, a zone change, and a tentative subdivision map to develop 14 single-family residential lots ranging in size from 43,566 square feet to 55,753 square feet, and those are net square footages for the parcels. The proposed zoning designation would be A1 agricultural zone, which requires a minimum one-acre lot and allows for a single-family residence and accessory uses. The proposed project would also include the development of two private streets, off-site improvements to Vista Grande Drive, drainage improvements, wet and dry utilities, and associated infrastructure. No homes are proposed at this time, however, future residences may include one- and two-story structures, subject to all of the applicable development standards under the A1 zone. The maximum allowable building height in the A1 zone is 35 feet or two stories, whichever is less. Up on the screen are pictures of the project site. The site consists mostly of vacant former agricultural land with a 1,000-square-foot single-family residence that still exists on the property and is occupied by a renter. That is in the northwest portion of the westerly parcel. Currently, there are no sewer services provided to the site, however, the site is located within the Vista Sanitation District Service Area. Other than the residents and minor agricultural and landscaping activities, the property supports mostly non-native vegetation, weeds, and it's dominated by basically grasses and weeds over the property. Looking at the pictures, top-left corner is looking at the site, looking westerly from the eastern boundary of the project site. The view to the right of that is also looking west, but from the top of the ridge in the center of the property. At the bottom-left-hand corner would be looking northeast at the property from the bend in Vista Grande, right at the southwest corner of the overall project site. And there's also an image looking east from the center of the property down the slope. Two more shots, one is looking north from on top of the higher portion of the parcel or the ridge, roughly in the center of the two parcels that are part of the annexation, and likewise, looking south from that same location. Overall, this slide shows where the project site is located, adjacent to other uses. The pre-zoning designation that the city would establish, as mentioned, is the A1 agricultural zone. There's no zoning on the project site now, except as it would be zoned by the County of San Diego, but no city zoning. It is within the city's sphere of influence and is designated in the city's general plan as RR, or rural residential, which allows for one dwelling unit per acre density. Adjacent uses to the north include agriculture, as shown on the aerial, and there's residential uses to the southeast, west, and other directions. This slide shows the existing adjacent city zoning, which is E1 zoning, and consists and allows for half-acre lots. That's all single-family residential there, shown in the area shaded in green. A little farther, as you get closer to East Vista Way, there's C1 commercial zoning. The proposed project, key issues related for the project is that it's consistent with the general plan, giving the lot sizes mentioned between 43,566 square feet and larger. They are consistent with the rural residential designation, which requires the minimum one-acre lot size, which would be 43,560 square feet. And that's also consistent with the A1 zoning that would be established upon annexation into the city. The project would provide sewer mains and connections to the property, as well as laterals to each site. It is compatible, considered compatible with the adjacent land uses, which are primarily residential with open areas and agriculture still. And the project would include roadway improvements to Vista Grande Drive. This slide shows the tentative parcel map. 14 lots, as mentioned, each one at minimum one acre. Two private streets connecting to Vista Grande Drive towards the south, so the two private streets run basically north and south, with six lots on Street A and seven lots, I'm sorry, eight lots off of proposed Street B. This slide shows a conceptual landscape plan. Landscaping would be required to meet the city's landscape zoning, part of the section of the zoning ordinance, and the landscaping also ties in with the grading plan for the project for stabilization of slopes and works in conjunction with the bioretention basins. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared and available for public review May 9 through June 7 this year, 2016. The city did receive seven comment letters, and responses were provided to those comments, and those responses are included in the final MND and with the staff report. As far as the general plan, the proposed density of .8 dwelling units per acre is below the maximum of one dwelling unit per acre allowed by the general plan, and future homes for the project would be required to meet the development standards of the A1 zone. Staff did, it was brought to our attention, there is one small error in the conditions of approval. If I can read that out loud to the commission so that we can recommend a change to that condition to correct that error. It is under engineering information and conditions. At the bottom-right-hand corner of your staff report, it would be page 159 of 189. I'll give you a few seconds to locate that, just let me know if you need any help. It would be condition 3J under improvements, under the engineering conditions. As it's stated in the proposed conditions in the report, it states that Vista Grande and private streets A and B shall provide a minimum of six-feet parkway between the face of curb and the right-of-way line. That was a mistake there, it should be five-and-a-half feet, as opposed to six feet. So I'd like to recommend that the commission would accept a modification of that condition to state that Vista Grande and private streets A and B shall provide a minimum of 5.5 parkway between the face of curb and the right-of-way line. Staff's recommendation is for adoption of a resolution recommending City Council approval of a mitigated negative declaration and monitoring and reporting program for the 14-lot single-family residential subdivision located immediately north of Vista Grande Drive, assessor parcel numbers 171-100-05 and 28. Also recommended that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the council make application to LAFCO, Local Agency Formation Commission, for the annexation and reorganization of those same parcel numbers, and also a recommendation for approval recommending that the City Council approve tentative subdivision map and zone change with pre-zoning to A1 for the 14-lot single-family residential subdivision located north of Vista Grande Drive. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant and the project engineer are here to help me answer any questions that the commission may have.
Commissioners, are there any questions of staff prior to hearing from the applicant? Commissioner Looney?
Thank you. Does the, or will the city require the developer to install sidewalks in this area? Because right now, it's kind of a nice rural setting, and it would be nice just to keep minimum curb and gutter without having to put sidewalks in.
Thank you, Commissioner Looney. That is in the, that is the intent of the city's development code, to not install sidewalks in these rural areas, so it would not be a requirement, and it is not recommended for these types of parcels.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. Mr. Winters, I believe I understand that the road will be improved for the length of the property that we're discussing.
That is correct.
Okay, what about the roadway that leads, part of the roadway that leads up to this property? Will that be improved at all?
Thank you, Commissioner Jackal. That section of the roadway leading up to the property at the southwestern end would also be improved for a length, basically the portion south of the county area that is already designated, covered by a right-of-way easement, that would be improved to the full required width for the asphalt paving, and the city's boundary would include that section of the roadway.
Thank you.
Leading up to the project.
Commissioner Rosler, please.
In the southeast corner of the subdivision, there's a drive that goes off, appears to go off-site. Does that connect to Vista Terrace, or Vista Grande Terrace? And is that for emergency access, or how does that work?
That will be a gated access for emergency purposes only, and it does connect to Vista Grande Terrace.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Commissioner Garretson?
Yes, Mr. Winters, just a quick question on drainage. Right now, there are no drainage there, right? It just basically goes down to the rest of the properties.
Basically drains naturally in all directions.
And with this proposal, it would continue to drain naturally in all directions?
It will receive project modifications, V-ditches, bioretention basins, all to detain surface water flows, but also to filter and clean that water. And the intent and design of those improvements would be to carry that surface water flow in the same direction that it goes in naturally. However, it would be captured by the basins, treated, and eventually ties in with the natural path of the water, and eventually to the creek system.
So it should have no impact on the properties below in terms of drainage?
It will improve the existing situation. It will, as well as the roadway improvements. So I think the project applicant wants to speak to this further, and the engineer can probably provide a little more of a technical response to it.
Because with all the driveways and the streets, the two additional streets, I would think that there's going to be a lot more runoff drained down the hill. So that's, that's my concern.
There shouldn't be. That's the purpose of all the hydrological studies that have been done, and the improvement to Vista Grande Drive should take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more lights, we'll speak with the applicant. Chip Hasley, please. Good evening. State your name and give your address.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chip Hasley with Park Grove Properties in San Diego. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Omni Financial. I want to thank the planning staff, Chris Winters, John Conley and his staff, and the rest of the departments in the city for helping shepherd the project through. It's been about a two-and-a-half-year journey, but we think we've got a good project that will be an asset to the city of Vista. It's going to create some upscale housing in this area of Vista. It's going to increase the property tax base for the area. The fiscal analysis that was conducted shows that there will be a surplus, meaning the tax revenue generated by the project and new residents will more than offset the cost of city services. And then there'll be $600,000-plus of development impact fees that will flow to the city as well. Part of the project approvals include the annexation into the city. As Chris said, it meets all of the requirements for annexation. It's within the sphere of influence of the city. There's actually first picture there, if you've got it. Probably be good. The second requirement is it's contiguous to the city boundary. If you look at the hatched area to the southwest there, that's all the city boundary right there. So the property's contiguous to it on the southwest. And the zoning, general plan, is consistent with what the city has planned for that area, which are one-acre lots. If you look at the map up there, the current city zoning to the southwest is half-acre. The county is located immediately to the south of the property on Vista Grande. Those are all half-acre lots, and you get into some larger lots when you head to the north and the east. So we think the zoning of one acre is compatible to the area. There'll also be no change in services for this property. The city currently services the property, or will provide service once the extension of the sewer line goes in. There will be one detachment, and that'll be from the Vista Fire Protection District, which is a county district, but they actually contract with the city for fire and emergency services. So from the standpoint of service, there'll be no change there. It's just an administrative change, detachment from the Fire Protection District. We reached out to the neighbors in the area in a couple of meetings, although it's not fashionable to probably support development these days. I think they recognize there'll be some substantial benefits of this project when it's completed for that area, not the least of which is the improvements to Vista Grande Road. You might put those pictures on there, if you would. I took a few pictures up there. That's the current Vista Grande Road looking to the west. The next shot has, looking to the property, that'd be heading east. You can see where the end of the improvements are right now, kind of where the AC berm is right there. And then as you go up the road there, the houses to the right are in the county, if you want to do, you can see the condition of the road in that area. It's not in very good condition, and it's barely one lane. We will be putting two lanes in there, so in addition to the improved access, there'll also be improved safety for people driving up in that area. In addition to that, I don't know if I, you can keep going on the slides. The slide on the left is up the road a little further, and then the slide on the right is actually taken from the eastern property line, property boundary, heading west. That's approximately where the secondary access road will be constructed. There'll be, I think it's a 24-foot emergency fire protection access road. So that will be up there, which will improve fire safety in that area. And then in addition, the improvements on the property will create a situation that'll reduce the fire hazard there without having the native vegetation that's up on the property now. So in conclusion, we support the staff's recommendation for approval, and I hope you would see fit to approve it again as well tonight. I do have the project engineer, Ron Holloway, from BHA, and the property owner here, Martin Boone, if there's any questions for, for any of them of a technical nature. Thank you.
Mr. Hasley, don't go away. Got a question for you. Commissioner Rosler?
The portion of Vista Grande that we're looking at right here, is that a public street?
It's a good question. There are a number of easements up there. As near as I can tell, it's actually a county right-of-way, and it's actually a private easement at the present time. So the county is not maintaining that road.
Okay.
And I believe it's the responsibility of the property owners. I think there are a few of them here in the audience tonight, and they've lived up there a lo, a long time. But it's a county, it could be a county road, it has the right-of-way there, but is not being currently maintained by the county.
Okay, so it is public right-of-way?
I believe, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. If I remember correctly, LAFCO, on an annexation proposal, asks that the applicant poll the neighbors and ask if any of the neighbors are interested in annexation. Also, I can't remember if that's still the case or not, but I'm curious if you know the status of the desires of any of the adjacent neighbors in joining in the annexation, or if LAFCO is, if LAFCO asked about that.
LAFCO does ask about that, and we would be sending out a letter to the adjacent property owners soliciting their interest in participating in the annexation. That came up in a couple of the neighborhood meetings. There are a few property owners to the west that have expressed an interest in possibly going in on the annexation. Less interest from the south, because those are all fully improved properties at one-half acre. The way the properties sit below the street, they wouldn't really be able to take advantage of the sewer that's going in. If the situation were reversed and they could participate and tie into the sewer, I think it'd be a different situation. But since their houses are fully improved with working septic systems, there's less interest on their, on their behalf.
Thanks.
Thank you. I just wondered, the existing residence that's on the property, is that going to stay, or...?
No, that'll be torn down. Let's see, it's a 1950s modified house, about 1,000 square feet. So yeah, that will be taken down.
Okay, just wondering.
Okay, I see no other questions at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Martin Boone, did you wish to speak? In support, you got it, thank you. All right. Joyce Halliburton, and I believe you have some photos? Oh, Ursula's going to speak for you. Got it, okay.
My name is Ursula Sack. I'm with Guajome Alliance for Responsible Development, also known as Guard. known as Guard, and Joy is our president. And this will my remarks will take about four minutes. Can I have the extra minute? See how it goes. Okay, thank you. Yeah, if you would take a look at the map there as I speak. Guard believes this project should be rejected because the environmental review is inadequate in many fundamental ways. It is a review of grading only, without a specific plan for the actual building that would occur. It does not accurately address many of the impacts of the project. Please look at the map and you see two properties that are being proposed to annex into the city. The Vista Grande Drive project is number 25 on the map there, and number 41 is the 300-acre Bonzall Farm, known locally as Strawberry Hill. Although they are two separate annexation applications, you can see that these two projects are inextricably inextricably linked in terms of the impact they will have on the semi-rural and agricultural lands of the neighborhood. So we are asking you to take the larger view and consider the farmland when you consider this project. They really go together. The environmental review did not do that. The environmental review incorrectly stated that the project does not involve changes that could result in conversion of farmland. Actually, this project extends the city boundary northward to the Bonzall Farm and is therefore a gateway to the development of those 300 acres of farmland. It is exceptional farmland that has State of California designations, including prime, unique, and statewide of farmland of statewide importance and farmland of local importance. If these two annexations had happened, it would not only destroy farmland, but would extend the city boundaries far beyond the current sphere of influence. In its comments, the County of San Diego stated that the project is currently located in the Bonzall Community Planning Area. The environmental documents should address impacts to the Bonzall Community Plan and County General Plan and consistencies with the county's land use policies. But according to the Bonzall Sponsor Group, this environmental review does not address the land use issues as related to the Bonzall Community and the County General Plan. And they also point out that the project is growth-inducing due to the extension of the sewer line into the area, and that is inconsistent with the County General Plan. Another area that the environmental review fails to address is ridgeline development issues. Viewed from almost any direction, the site is blue sky along a prominent ridgeline. The grading and building along the ridgeline would disrupt scenic Vista and blue-sky-black backdrop. The proposed billing pads are not set back from the ridgeline, which means the homes could rise 30 to 35 feet above the current high point of the hill. And so in order to accurately assess the environmental impact to the ridgeline view sheds, a specific plan for the development of the homes would be necessary. The lack of a specific plan should lead you to reject this environmental review and this project. For example, when they were talking about aesthetics in terms of dark skies, they concluded that there will be no impact from the creation of light or glare, given that, quote, "The project is not expected to include the installation of new streetlights." Well, the those conclusions reached in this case and regarding other impacts as well are based on assumptions. That's not a specific plan. And finally, there's the issue of traffic. And if you would look, show the next photograph. These photographs, my good old photographs, taken at the intersection of Warmlands and East Vista Way, which is the area this the that this project, that's how the people would get into the project, would be at this intersection. So you're looking south there, all the way down to Taylor Street. And at that point, East Vista Way goes from five lanes, well, really, plus some bicycle lanes, down to two lanes. Five lanes to two lanes. And that's why you have this gridlock here. Goes all the way up to Gopher Canyon and beyond it. Patsy, if you'd show the next picture, you can see this is what people are dealing with on a daily basis. Now, I think you'll agree that it doesn't take a traffic engineer to see that this intersection and this whole section of East Vista Way is completely gridlocked. But the environmental review comes to the opposite conclusion, reporting a level of service grade A during peak traffic hour. Does that look like an A? No, I don't. Okay.
Start to wrap it up, please.
I'm wrapping it up. According to the Bonzall Sponsor Group, traffic on East Vista Way is currently level of service F for both morning and evening rush hours. However, the current building in the city of Vista along this roadway has created a much longer rush hour, both in the morning and evening commute. Guard believes that the city must correct this terrible gridlock traffic situation before this project or any further development in this East Vista Way corridor are even accepted for consideration. Guard also believes that the Vista Grande and Bonzall Farm properties should remain in the county because the Bonzall Community Plan is by far the most appropriate land use plan for this precious rural area. Thank you.
Don't go away, Ms. Sack. We got a question for you.
Okay.
Have you been in contact with the county on the engineering department, Public Works, on the status of East Vista Way, Gopher Canyon?
I do know that there is some improvement going to be made at the intersection of Gopher Canyon and East Vista Way. They're going to put in a right-turn lane for northbound traffic going east onto Gopher Canyon. And they're also going to be putting in a right-turn lane for people coming from that direction and turning north onto Gopher Canyon. That's that's all that the county has in plan at this time. And that is supposed to happen, be completed sometime next year, I believe.
Ah, very good.
Yeah, that was a nice surprise.
So it is in their CIP to and and been budgeted and funded to do those improvements.
Yes. But that's there. There's no extra lanes. It's just a right-turn lane so people can at least get out of that get out of that line and make a right turn.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your attention and thanks for the extra time.
Frederick, thank you.
Good evening. I haven't spoken at one of these. I am the next-door neighbor.
Okay, so just state your name, give your address, and then get going.
Fred Heald, 2283 Vista Grande.
Thank you.
And I read the mitigated declaration, and what struck me about it was that repeatedly it said, "This is just for grading the property. This is just for grading. We're not going to put up houses. There's not going to be any people living there." That's not included in any of this report that we're doing. I'm hoping to live here for many, many years, and so I expect that they're probably going to put up houses and people will probably live in those houses. That should be part of the of the environmental report, as far as I'm concerned. So that really concerned me. The other thing that concerned me is the possibility that that 14 number would change once that property was annexed, because I understand that it's possible, once it's annexed to the city, that that would get changed into much, much higher density housing, that that certainly is a possibility. I may be incorrect in that. That's just my understanding of of that. But I'm very concerned because this 14 just about doubles the amount of traffic on that street. There's about 14 residences in that area. As we said earlier, there aren't any sidewalks. That means that people walk their dogs and their kids on the street, and we'd be doubling the amount of traffic on the street there, which creates a hazard. Also, there's a blind 90-degree turn on Vista Way that is is an accident hazard. And that particularly concerns me. Every time I come around it, I expect somebody to be cutting close on that curve and have an accident there. I don't believe that's addressed or even talked about in this report. So that concerns me. Lastly, as Ursula said, the fact that it's a keystone to annex the Strawberry Fields was not at all addressed in the environmental impact report. So just echoing her sentiments there. I was I was asked if I wanted to, if I'd like to participate in annexation. It seemed like the only benefit I would be getting was sewer, and our septic is feeding our orange trees. So I don't have a reason to add a sewer on my side. So that's that's my thoughts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Betty Curtis, please, or Bet Curtis? And Irene Stewart, you'll be next to speak. So if you could start making your way up forward, that would be helpful.
Good evening. I'm Betty Curtis. Live at 1258 Via Del Cerro. Several years ago, there was a proposed annexation of the 300 acres of Strawberry Hills. My co-chair, Bill Ferrante, and I formed a group called Strawberry Hills Association for Rural Preservation, SHARP. We attended the planning commission here at Vista with hundreds of people standing behind us saying, "No, please, save our farmland, save our community." Unfortunately, Vista Planning Group at that time approved the project. We then went to the, I'm sorry, not your supervisors, your commission.
City Council.
Thank you. And that was approved. We took our fight to the county. I'm sorry. When we went to the city council meeting, we had hundreds of people. There were so many people that they actually had to put speakers outside. They had fire, they had police, they had paramedics, speakers, lighting, because the room wouldn't accommodate the hundreds of people that came out. There was a door-to-door group just trying to get everybody involved, and they did get involved. But the city of Vista decided that what we had to say wasn't worth enough, that the developer had a better plan. So they, of course, approved it. We took it to the county, and the county said, "No, there's not enough water, not enough services to be able to take care of this large project." We also were able to take our boundary, which is now Bonzall Planning Group, and we took it all the way back to Warmlands and Vista Grande. Now, from what I hear, they're just ignoring that. We're minimum two-acre zoning. We don't need sewer because of it. But if you start bringing in the sewer, and this project is just a stepping stone, that's obvious, because I don't know any developer, and I've been a realtor for 34 years, I don't know any developer who's going to take 14 lots, put in all of the services, all of the road widening, the, you know, the sewer line, they're going to bring lighting in, widen the roadways, do all the necessary things to to put in these so-called 14 homes and make a profit. Not unless they're going to charge $2 million per parcel or per home, which is not likely. So it's just a stepping stone. It's obvious. I know they have their eye on that 300 acres. But we ask that you please, please, allow us to maintain what's left of the rural atmosphere that we have. Vista has always been known as a rural community, as a beautiful community. We produce food that feeds the world, and we hope that you will not approve this project, because there is no project. They have no plan other than an annexation. They're not saying, "Hey, we're going to put these homes in, and they're going to be this size, and we're going to do this, we're going to do that." They're not. It's just a stepping stone to 300 acres. And we please ask that you not approve this. Otherwise, we have to take our fight all the way to the county, and that's where we won the last time. I hope it won't go that far. Please let us enjoy our neighbors here in Vista. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions for me?
Irene Stewart, please.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Irene?
Thank you so much. Irene Stewart, 2189 Vista Grande Drive. There's a Vista Grande Terrace, Vista Grande Court, two different Vista Grande Drives in this neighborhood. I and my husband bought a few years ago on Vista Grande Drive. That's two lots to the east of where this development is. We don't have any problem with the development, and I'm a real neophyte on this. And so I have a couple of concerns to voice. One is, I we got the mail notice that says if our concern is not voiced here, then if we want to file a suit later on, and we haven't voiced our concern here, then we can't use it as a basis for the suit. And the question is, are we being recorded, or is somebody else marking down what we're raising here?
Yes, it is being recorded.
We're being recorded?
And you're part of the minutes and filling out of the speaker slip with your name and address. Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. The second point is, I noticed somebody earlier, one of my neighbors, raised the point, "Well, what happens if the developer makes a decision to go less than one acre on each house?" For instance, in the presentation that we saw earlier, there was an approximation of .8 per house, and also an acknowledgement that it was an A1 zoning with a one acre per house. So I already see some slippage there. When my neighbor raised that earlier, Vice Chair Rossler shook his head. But we don't really know what the basis of, "No, they won't go less than one acre" is. Is that is it part of the proposal? Is there a chance for infill? Is there going to be a higher-density development on this property than we're being told right now, which seems to be either .8 or one acre?
Mr. Winters, did you want to address?
Thank you, Chairman Kramer. Just for clarification, a one unit per acre density would be like 1.0 as far as number of houses you could put in in one acre of land. Going to a .8 density is actually less dense than the absolute maximum that would be allowed.
Because some of the lot sizes are just a little bit more than an acre, correct?
That's exactly correct.
So when you do the calculations, that's how you get the .8?
Some are actually closer to an acre and a half. The roadway improvements are included in the gross acreage for each lot. The acreages that I did list in the presentation were the net acreages, but the lots are actually larger in general.
And the question is, for those of us who have not received notice of this until we received a mailing a few days ago, for instance, nobody from the developer's office contacted us, et cetera. How firm is that? Or are we going to end up with a high-density development like just down the street behind the Chow Restaurant, which is part of what's feeding into that huge traffic congestion that you saw in the photographs in the earlier presentation? Those are the sorts of things that concern us. There's also concern about whether or not we'll be forced to join the septic, the sewer system that's going to be set in there. These are all concerns that we we're just getting notice of this development, and I'm only two houses away from it, two Vista large lot houses away. And so these are things that we'd very much like to address. I'm not against development, but I'm against being forced to join a septic or sewer system, against high-density development in an area that's basically one to one and a half acres development.
Got it.
When will this happen?
Let's go through the rest of the questions, and then the applicant will come back. And so he should address some of the comments that you have.
These were the these are the main ones. These are the main concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, I know I will not pronounce this correctly. Last name, Magini?
Mangini.
Mangini. Nice Italian.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Maurizio Mangini, 2189 Vista Grande Drive. I'm Eric Turing Stewart. I have two questions. Is there a firm, unbreakable, unchangeable condition that should this be permitted, the house lots will remain as presented to us today and will under no circumstance become a higher density? Will that be a written, unshakable condition of getting this annexation? The second one is, everybody's talking about house lots, which implies houses, but I understand from what I heard now that there is no EIR Environmental Impact Report, including the houses themselves, the effect on the albedo, the lights, the drainage. And I also heard something about a creek. I've never seen any water flowing anywhere. heard something about a creek. I've never seen any water flowing anywhere. So, they're all issues that seem to be inconsistent with talking about houses of an acre or more. But if I understand correctly, the EIR does not talk about the full final development. So, those are the two issues. The guarantee that a higher density will not develop, and that the EIR truly reflects the ultimate issue that is being presented here, namely the houses and the occupancy of those houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Colby, followed by Cliff Kaiser.
Okay. Paula Colby, 2196 Vista Grande Drive. We recently bought four acres south of the project, and we're, our intent is to do, well, we've always used organic methods. And actually, these days, we're going beyond that to permaculture. And so, our concerns are especially with possible pollution in the area, and especially with, we're wondering what the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan says will happen to the runoff water around the properties there. And I understand that this is required by the California Water Resources Board. And anyway, we have concerns. And actually, because we're doing permaculture and natural methods and trying to use as many natives and, and food-bearing crops, we're not concerned about the sewer. We appreciate the leach field, too. So, anyway, we don't mind septic. So, anyway, there are a lot, a lot of issues here. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Kaiser?
Good evening, Commissioners. Cliff Kaiser, 1620 Cuyahoga Street here in Vista. I'm neither for nor against this project, per se. It seems to be a pretty nice place for development from what we can see so far, one-acre lots. They've got to be pretty nice homes there. There, I'd probably like to live there if it were developed. However, the city has a history, at least recently, that I've been paying attention fairly closely in the last six or seven years of approving developments against the concerns of the local community. If this were to be annexed, these would be our Vista neighbors, and we've already heard from some of them, and there's others in the audience that haven't spoken, that are not very excited about putting this in their place. And this is the time to take a deep breath and make sure that this is the right plan for this part of the community just north of our city boundary. Because what happens, and we see this very frequently, as a matter of fact, there's a zone change and general plan amendment change on the agenda here right after this. So, it's like it's happening every month. There's a zone change and a general plan amendment change request, and it's kind of like willy-nilly. If a developer comes in and says that the land doesn't meet what we want to do, well, we'll just ask and change it, and it's changed. And the problem then becomes, once it gets changed, then you guys, at the chastisement of the attorney, Mr. Stone, you have to throw up your hands and say, "We can do nothing," because it's, it's in the general plan, it's in the zoning, and we can't do anything. And that's unfortunate. So, this is the time to make that decision so that we're, it's in the correct, for the, the community and for Vista. If it does move forward, a couple of comments. I'm not real fond of communities that don't have sidewalks. Always seemed to me to be a little unsafe. Maybe there's a compromise between cement sidewalks and some other type of walkway off the road. Traffic on East Vista Way, as you've seen, is very difficult, and I would echo those concerns. And again, I urge caution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no more speaker slips. Mr. Hasley, did you want to come back up and address any of the concerns?
I could try to address a couple of them. Maybe since Ron Holloway is here, it might be prudent to have him discuss the drainage.
Sure.
Which has been exhaustively studied, as you all know, what is required now to, with hydrology reports and stormwater prevention plans. So, maybe if he could come up and take that one sort of off the table, we can do the other ones.
Mr. Holloway, please.
Hi. I'm Ron Holloway with BHA 5115, Avenida Encinas in Carlsbad. Our firm prepared the tentative map, the drainage study, the stormwater quality management plan, and then the annexation documents. Each lot here is designed to, to treat the water that runs off of it. Each one of them has a basin, and all the street runoff is also being treated in a basin close to Lot 1 over there. The majority of it ends up over there in the detention basin on Lot 1. So, all the, all the runoff from the site that has been graded will be treated. There's areas that remain native that aren't going to be treated, that, that remain natural. The lady's comment about the SWIP, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, that is a permit we have to obtain from the State of California for construction activity. It doesn't include necessarily the long-term treatment. It just takes care of erosion control during the course of the construction. And once the grading is done, that permit is terminated. But there will be an ongoing stormwater quality management plan that the owner, the owners will have to maintain all these facilities for perpetuity. So, if you have any specific questions, I can, I can answer them.
Mr. Looney?
Thank you. On the tentative subdivision map, on the west edge, there's a proposed city of Vista easement that goes directly north from Vista Grande Drive. From the notes on the plan, it states that the easements are for SDGNE. Is there anything on the tentative subdivision map that indicates the sewer being able to be expanded for this other future development that is not a part of this application? It seems that the sewer design is kind of a dead end for this 14 acres.
Yeah. Due to the topography, it's unlikely that the sewer could be extended beyond this project.
Right, because the topography is north.
We're at the top of the hill, essentially.
I mean, it drops severely, and then it comes back up, and then it drops back down to Gopher Canyon.
Correct.
So, there's really nothing that is on your proposal that allows the sewer district to expand the lines that are being provided for this project?
The lines that are shown on our map are specifically for this project only, and it drops away on the north and the east side, so it wouldn't be able to serve other properties.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Rossler, please.
The detention basin that's in the southwest corner of the property, that basically collects all the water that's coming off of the, off of the site?
Not all of the waters.
But...
The majority of it.
The majority of it.
And it's a detention basin also, so it, it respects the historical flows that flow from the property right now.
Right.
So, it essentially lets it trickle out as...
It stores it, it stores it during a storm, and then it trickles out at what currently happens on the property.
Historic rates.
That's the, that's the, the idea behind the plan.
Right.
And you get that permit from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, right?
The SWIP you get from the state.
Right.
And the stormwater quality management plan is processed through the city.
But there, the city's requirements for doing this come from the Regional Water Quality Control Board.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, the neighborhood, after this, after the subdivision is built, should not expect any more water coming off this project than currently comes. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct. Right. Every lot has a, by a retention basin, which acts as a detention basin also. And some of the lots on the north and the east side, you know, the water runs off to the north and east.
Right.
But it will not exceed the historical amounts, and it will be treated also. So, it'll be clean water. It runs through a filter and goes off the site as clean water.
Okay. Super. Thank you.
Just one comment, Rick, on that. That's the, kind of the beauty of what changes have been made from the state and federal, is that the development of this 14 acres really prevents any erosion of any rain hitting this property coming across the street on those other parcels. The water is collected, diverted into a retention basin, so it has the opportunity to soak back into the soil rather than being put into a gutter that goes to a bigger gutter that goes to a drain system that goes out to the ocean.
Mr. Holloway, and once the water is, is cleaned, gone through the filter, then it goes into Buena Creek?
I think it goes over towards Gohomi Lake.
Gohomi Lake. Okay. Okay. No other questions, I guess, related? Nope. Commissioner Garrettson?
I don't know if this is a question for you or the developer, but what would prevent a person from proposing these 14 houses and coming back later with some other plan? In other words, if we approve this, is it set in stone that there, the only development that can take place here without coming back would be 14 houses?
That's correct. Yeah. It's just approving this project only at this point in time.
That's correct, Commissioner. Any other proposal would have to come back to the Commission.
I have a question for, yes. Hasley. Why are you proposing just the development of lots and not inclusion of the, of housing at this time?
I think we wanted to see what market conditions might be at the time the property's ready for development, and adjust the house size according to whatever the market conditions might be at that time. The grading does provide a pad area that's specified on all the lots, but within that pad, the house could move around and be adjusted. So, that was the reason to do that, because there can be quite a lengthy time between applying for a project and actually building it. We're two and a half, three years into this now, so it wouldn't have been prudent to put a house on these lots. But we did provide a pad area on all the lots.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. I, I don't know whether this is a question for, for you or for Mr. Winters, but my, one, one of my huge concerns about this is the traffic. And it seems to me that the traffic study and the discussion of that was quite inadequate to what actually goes on. I've had to drive down that street going to a house beyond Gopher Canyon Road a number of times, and it is just almost impossible. So, is there some way to, to request another traffic study, or one that takes in? So often, these traffic studies deal with only the, the situation right here at hand, and they don't look at the other things that are going on down the road. And I'm, I'm wondering, maybe you have to ask Mr. Winters, is it possible to ask for a traffic study that does a better job?
So, John Conley, Community Development Director, just want to respond to the traffic issue. The traffic study that was done for this project was actually a staff-driven study. We didn't have a consultant that came in and did a full-blown analysis of all the intersections based on a one-acre subdivision of 14 lots. It doesn't generate a lot of traffic. So, our standards in terms of reviewing projects don't require a traffic study for a project of that size unless there's some unusual significant traffic issue in the immediate vicinity of the project. We do recognize that there's a lot of traffic on East Vista Way going north out of town. That is a problem. We do recognize this project may contribute a few trips to that. That's within the Commission's discretion to recommend denial of the project on that fact, if that's what you would like to do. But the staff's recommendation is not to deny it, because we believe a one-acre minimum lot subdivision fits with the area and wouldn't generate a significant amount of traffic. The traffic problem going northbound is a county problem as well, because it's outside our jurisdiction. So, if we widen the road all the way up to Warmlands, which is roughly where our city boundary is, we'll still have the problem going to Gopher Canyon and ultimately to 76. So, until the county steps in and works with us to fix the problem, or there's future development that requires the improvements to fix the problem, we're kind of stuck. So, from our perspective, this project meets the general plan. It's not asking for a higher density than what our general plan allows for. One-acre minimum lot sizes is the lowest density that our general plan allows for residentially and, you know, with outside the sphere, outside the city boundary. So, the analysis that we showed is for Warmlands and East Vista Way was based on the traffic study that was updated in 2014 for the 300-acre project to the north. It shows a level of service A. That's what the analysis shows. So, yes, there are peak hour issues on the segment that back up from the conditions northbound, but if you drive down to the signal, you can get through the signal, you know, without a lot of problems on a normal day. So, that's what the traffic, that's what the traffic study says. So, can you go northbound? Probably not. Can you go southbound? How many phases do you have to wait for before you pull out of the signal? The traffic study shows that it's not significant. So, that's what the staff recommendation was based on.
Mr. Conley? I have, I have a question regarding Strawberry Hills or the farms beyond that. How is all of that interaction with this project?
So, Strawberry Hills is a separate application that is processing. They are in the process of starting their EIR, so they have a fairly lengthy road to go down. Their application can proceed whether or not this project goes forward. They already have a connection to the city through an existing property along Vista Grande that's part of their application. So, this project does connect to that property, but it's not a requirement for them to proceed with that project.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more speaker slip. Mr. Burnquist?
My name is Dean Burnquist. I live at 2446 Green Hills Way. I'm sitting here listening to all of this conversation about whether it's five and a half feet or six feet, or whether there's going to be sidewalks or no sidewalks. I'd like you to understand that this whole thing is a smokescreen. The object is Strawberry. This will connect, this 14-acre lot will connect to the 320 acres, which is the object of this presentation. The 14 acres is nothing. It's the 320 that they're after. Now, if you think you're going to have traffic problems with 14 more homes, or 14 lots, wait till you have 320 acres out there. And you're going to, you don't want to be responsible for the approval of this project, which is simply the gateway into 320 acres. Please take that into consideration. And I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, Commissioner Garrettson, please?
Let me get this straight. We're, we're to approve this based on the possibility of 14 lots? Or are we approving that it will be 14 lots?
It is approving 14 lots.
Period.
Period.
And it does not include any houses. So, they could put a thousand-square-foot house on this, or a 10,000-square-foot house on each lot.
They would have to meet the setbacks applicable to the A1 zone, and that would regulate the size of house, as well as the topography, which is going to impact the home's placement. Being that it's a one-acre lot, I would imagine they would be above-average in size houses.
But there's nothing in this that says it will or shall or must. They could put 1,000 square... They could put 1,000 square feet or 10,000 square feet houses on this. Would it have to come back to the planning commission? Once we, once it's approved here? For the actual development of the houses?
Commissioner Garrettson, if I may assist. Patty Chow, City Planner Deputy Director. Your question as far as the size of the house, as Mr. Winters was pointing out, as long as it meets the development standards in the zone, it could be whatever size house it is, as long as it meets the development standards as far as the setbacks pertaining to the A1 zone.
So as far as whether this fits into the general character of the area is a big question mark in terms of the size of the houses?
This, one may say so. However, they would have to go through the building permit review process at that point. The planning staff and building staff will be reviewing the homes, the elevations, what they look like. So we go through a ministerial review process at that time.
But as far as the planning commission?
The planning commission would not be involved...
We'd have no say once this is approved.
Once this is approved, and if it is in fact annexed into the city and it goes through city council and LAFCO, then subsequent to that, they would be submitting for building permit review. The planning commission would not be involved in that building permit review. It would be a ministerial review by staff.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Looney, please.
Thank you. A question for staff. How could this 14 acres be a gateway to the future development to the north?
This project is not necessary for the development to the north. The other project that's been referred to by some of the members of the public president, it does have a boundary on the city's boundary. And if this project never existed, it wouldn't make no difference to that application. The other project was in the works and applied to, for the city before this project came up to the city. It's still under review or in, in processing. I'm not working on it directly myself, but this project doesn't provide any benefit to that project.
So there's no physical amenities? There's no easements? There's no right-of-ways given on this 14-acre parcel that could be extended or attached to that future development at any time?
That's correct, Commissioner. I don't, I'm not having the knowledge of anything with this project that would benefit the other project.
Okay. Question on development. Once it's zoned, single-family homes, and that's what the application for, single-family homes on one-acre parcels, the only way for them to increase the density outside of a guest house or a second dwelling, depending upon the size of that property, would have to go through an entire zone change?
A zone change, assuming annexation into the city and establishment of these residences, any future proposal for a higher density or any other change, it would be a zone change request, a general plan amendment request. It would be going likewise through a planning commission, public hearing, and eventually to a city council meeting for consideration.
If someone's going to buy a one-acre parcel, they're buying it probably for the rural setting that currently exists. Question, another question regarding development. If I was the applicant and owned all 14 parcels, and I wanted to develop it myself, would the city look at my application for 14 homes differently than if I had a separate LLC for each lot?
Commissioner Looney, make sure, let me make sure that I understand your question. So if you're saying that there's a corporation that would come in and develop all the 14 lots at once versus an individual owner, like each individual, 14 individuals that would come in and develop their houses separately? Is that your question?
Correct.
Would the city be treating each party differently? Not from a processing perspective, no, because we would still be, they would still, each party, whether it's the corporation or individual homeowner coming in individually, we would still make them go through the same process as far as the building permit.
The only reason I ask that is because in the county, if I came in as one LLC to develop all 14 parcels, I have to go through a different processing, approval process than individual owners. So that was, that was why I was asking. Right, right. Okay. Thank you. Right.
Commissioner Jackal, please. Okay. Commissioners, thoughts? Commissioner Carroll, please.
Mr. Winters, are there some traffic impact fees going to the city for this project?
I believe that's correct, Commissioner. The director might want to speak more specifically to that question.
Traffic impact fees for single-family homes, I believe, are about $6,000 per unit, so they would have to pay those fees upon issuance of a building permit for any of the 14 lots.
6,000 times 14?
Correct.
Okay.
Does, does the city, this maybe is a thing of the past, I have a question about vesting tentative maps. Are those around anymore?
Sure.
And is there, what triggers, when a project would be a good-to-be vesting tentative map versus a regular tentative map?
If there are potential changes to the code that could happen in the future before the project is finalized, that could affect what's on the tentative map. The vesting map acts to protect those approvals at the time it's approved, so future changes to the code wouldn't affect the development. If you don't have a vesting map, you could be affected at the time of final map and have to make changes if the code's changed between those two dates.
Okay, so it's, it would be typically a request by the applicant to do that process? Does that more securely lock in pad locations and bio-retention locations, or not?
No. The tentative map that you see here is what you're approving, all of the locations of the grading, the streets, the bio-retention is all subject to your review and approval. Nothing else could be built on that property without coming back to the planning commission and potentially back to the city council.
Thank you.
Regardless of what type of map you're processing.
This is relatively simple in our complex process here in Vista. It's an annexation. It's a logical extension of the city boundaries. It's a logical extension of the city services when sewer. The property, the property is addressed in the city of Vista, or in Vista, 92084. The kids that come out of this project will go to the Vista Unified School District. Water will be provided by the Vista Irrigation District. It is, what we're being asked to do is something that implements our general plan. We, five years ago, we spent a whole bunch of time and effort going through the entire city, and we decided protecting single-family neighborhoods was one of our priorities. I believe that a one-acre subdivision protects that, that, those single-family neighborhoods. Higher density, half-acre lots to the south, agriculture to the north, one acre makes a lot of sense to me. So I, like I said, I see it as relatively straightforward. An annexation, pre-zoning, tentative map for 14 lots. It's, they ask for a guarantee and it be written in stone. That doesn't happen anywhere in California under our governmental system. The applicant, the property owner, always has the right to come in and apply for whatever he wants. And, and, but, that process, that application, will go through this exact same process. They will have an environmental review, they will come back for public hearings, and we'll go, we'll, we'll make a decision, and the, and the council may, we'll recommend, we'll make a recommendation, and the council will make a decision. So we can't offer that guarantee. But what we have in here is the dead end of city services going to the north and east. I mean, this, there isn't access being provided on the map with Street A and B to the property to the north. The sewer lines aren't being extended to the north or to the, to the east. Like I said, it's relatively simple, and I think it's, it implements our general plan, and therefore, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Bell, please.
Thank you. Couple of issues. I, I feel you on the traffic. I want to thank you guys for speaking up. It's frustrating to those of us who live in it and have to drive in it. I don't think anyone up here is going to deny that at certain times during the day especially, it's really frustrating in that area north of Vista. I do want to make sure we have some sympathy for the city and what the work they're doing. I understand it's frustrating sometimes to hear about studies and different data that's gathered because it feels disconnected from what we're dealing with day to day. But we have to use standards, we have to use studies, we have to use some kind of, some kind of minimum barrier for us to all agree on to look at this. If we don't like those studies, talk about doing more. Talk about talking to your council members, talk to the city about funding more studies. And talk to the county, too, because we're right on the borderline with the county up there. So I, I feel you, but I think that the traffic issue, we have to go with what the guidelines show right now. And right now, they show that it's within acceptable levels. I understand the feeling that any more homes doesn't feel good, and it doesn't make it right, but we have to look at some of the data that we have. Second, I don't see the connection to the strawberry fields. The only question I'd have is for the developer, if there's any connection you have to the developer of that at all? And I'm seeing a shake of the head, no. I, again, I, I get the, the trepidation of more development, and so if that's something you believe in, fight it. Be a public voice. Get out and do what you've done in the past, and make sure you protect what you think is right there. But tonight, with this decision, I don't see the connection there personally. And then third, with the rezoning, I think this has been addressed. The developer is really limited in what they can do once this map is approved. So they have to come back to the city, they have to come back to us to change anything here that's outside a certain range. And that range is laid out in the report. It's here. It's laid out on paper what they're allowed to do. So take a look at that, but I think we've got enough protections in place that at least for the immediate future, we can make sure we know that the developer's doing something within the range of what we're approving and what we're looking for. So with that, that's, I'd lend my support and agree with Commissioner Rosler on his analysis as well.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Just, just, Mr. Winters, to touch base on the mitigated negative declaration, it was, it was talked about a little bit, that it, it didn't include the houses, but I, I don't think that's quite accurate. I, I think the plan does not include a specific house model, but the analysis, mitigated negative declaration is an analysis of the project with 14 single-family residences on the site. Is, is that correct?
Absolutely, Commissioner. It's under the assumption of the eventual development of those homes, one per lot. That's why the traffic section looks at the number of dwelling units there, assumes at 14, and the, and the average number of daily trips that they would generate. That's why the sections on land use compatibility are looking at the zoning setbacks and compatibility with the neighboring properties. All of that has been taken into consideration in the MND, as well as the staff report analysis.
It's not, it's not a report about 14 vacant lots. It's a report about 14 single-family residences.
Correct.
Thank you. So Commissioner Rosler, I, I think you made a nice summary there, and I, I am also in support of the project. I'm going to make a motion to approve it as written with the change as requested by Mr. Winters on project page 159 of 189 for 3J of the five-and-a-half-foot parkway instead of six-foot.
Commissioner Rosler?
I'll second the motion.
Any comments, commissioners? Seeing none, please vote. Please let the record show that the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, do you want to take five, or keep going? Okay, we'll keep going. We'll sign your paperwork. zone change, site development plan, condominium housing permit and tentative subdivision map to construct 47 condo developments on, including open space amenities landscaping, et cetera. Mr. Rosler, you want to give us the staff presentation, please?
Thank you Chairman Kramer, members of the planning commission. The project before you tonight is the Melrose, excuse me, Vista Melrose 47 condominium development. The application number is P 16 dash 0032. The application includes a general plan amendment, zone change, site development plan, condominium housing permit, as well as a tentative subdivision map. The 3.14 acre site is located on the east side of South Melrose Drive between Buena Vista Drive and Live Oak Road. The site is currently developed with an existing church and associated parking lot improvements. The surrounding land uses surrounding the site include a church to the north, apartments to the east, commercial development to the south, to the west, as well as to the northwest. This is a view of the site looking northwest from Live Oak Road. Here's a view of the site from the common driveway coming into the site looking east. The application before you tonight includes a general plan as well as a, a, a general plan amendment, excuse me, as well as a zone change. The general plan amendment would change the land use designation for the site from rural residential to mixed use. The zone change would change the zoning of the site from C1 commercial to MU mixed use. Staff does note that these are legislative actions so that you, as a planning commission, have full discretion over this item. The existing general plan land use designation of rural residential allows for extremely low residential development. The proposed general plan land use designation of mixed use would allow for vertical or horizontal mixed use which would include a commercial as well as a potential of residential. The current zoning of the site is C1 commercial, currently allows for a variety of uses including professional offices, commercial retail, as well as restaurant type uses. The proposed zone change would change it to mixed use which would allow for multifamily residential development with a maximum density of 15 dwelling units per acre, as well as other uses within that zone include retail as well as office. The proposed condominium development would be developed on 3.14 acres. The development includes 47 condominium units which equates to 14.97 dwelling units per acre. The site plan identifies open space, parking lot improvements, as well as other site improvements. Access to the site is provided by a private common driveway that connects the site to Buena Vista Drive as well as the South Melrose Drive. Recreation amenities within the proposed development would include a pool, spa, restroom building, seating areas, fire pit, wood shade structure, picnic area with barbecues, as well as an open turf area. The site plan indicates nine buildings, three-story buildings ranging from four to six condominiums per building. Access to the site would be provided by a new 32-foot wide driveway that would be connected to the existing Loop private road that leads to, again, Buena Vista Drive as well as South Melrose Drive. Parking in the mixed use zone calculates at 2.25 parking spaces for three-bedroom units and 2.75 parking spaces for four-bedroom units. Based on that calculation, the site would be required to maintain 116 parking spaces. The site plan before you tonight proposes 151 parking spaces. Staff does note that this project has been designed to ma, to meet the multifamily residential standards for the city, not just the mixed use zone standards. Setbacks associated with the site include a 26 and a half foot setback along Live Oak to the east, a 19.75 foot setback to the south, as well as a 21 and a half foot setback to the north. The regrading of the site would require installation of a retaining wall system along the northeast as well as south property lines. Those retaining walls would range in height from .2 feet to 4.9 feet in height. Recreation amenities within the proposed site would include a centralized recreation area which would feature a pool, a spa, fire pit area, seating area with trellis or covered trellis system, as well as a open turf area for passive open space opportunity. Other two open space areas would include a gathering space to the north of the site as well as a picnic area including barbecue and so forth towards the south of the site. In regards to pedestrian access, the site would maintain a four-foot wide concrete sidewalk that would span throughout the development in order to create linkage between the development elements. The four-foot wide sidewalk has been identified and read on the slide before you tonight. In regards to landscaping, the site plan does indicate the, the site will dedicate 37% of the site to landscape opportunities which would exceed the city's landscape standards, which is 10% for the site. The landscape plan includes, indicates that the site would utilize native and non-native plant material which would require low to moderate water use. The proposed condominiums would range in size from 1,735 square feet to 1,998 square feet. The unit breakdown would include 29 three-bedroom units as well as 18 four-bedroom units. The condominium buildings would be comprised of four different floor plans within four different building types. Each condominium would maintain a two-car garage as well as 90 cubic feet of storage space. The condominium buildings would be three-story buildings, maximum height of 40 foot 6 inches. The condos have been designed around a modern Spanish architectural style. The buildings would be enhanced with such features as cement plaster stucco exteriors, scalloped arched doorways, window treatments, fabric awnings, as well as other accent tile treatments. The roof line has been designed to provide a variety of roof features including hip, gable, slope, as well as flat roof elements. When completed, the project would maintain three distinctive irctone color schemes. The proposed general plan amendment would allow a maximum of 40 dwelling units per acre on the site which equates to 125 dwellings allowed on the property. However, the developer is proposing 47 condominium units which equates to 14.97 dwelling units per acre. In regards to the mixed use development standards, the proposed project has been designed to meet all applicable development standards including building height, parking, open space, as well as landscaping. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project and circulated from September 30th to October 19th. The mitigation identified within that document relates to cultural resources, geology and soils, noise, as well as traffic. Two comment letters have been received associated with the mitigated negative declaration and it's been circulated within your packet tonight. Staff has prepared responses to those, those comment letters and it's been based on environmental Staff brought this project to the planning commission through the early design review process, process on November 17th, 2015. I do want to note that the staff report did have an error in it. It indicated 2016, but in fact, it was in the year 2015. Since that time, staff has been working with the developer in order to alleviate some of the concerns of the planning commission. Some of those concerns include the density of the project. Since the November 17th meeting, the density of the projects has been reduced from 50 units to 47 units in order to provide more area for other amenities and, and separation and so forth. Building placement and site layout, the site has been modified to increase separation between the buildings as well as provide more amenities, open space amenities within the development, as well as reducing the massing along Live Oak Road. There was a concern with the lack of amenities and based on the city's design guidelines, this development would be required to maintain one amenity. Based on the modified plan that's before you tonight, the site has been modified to include three open space areas. Central pool area would include a pool, spa, restroom building, seating area, fire pits, wood shade structure with tables, as well as open turf area. And again, two other areas which is a gathering space with movable seating and a picnic area. The site plan was also modified to include private patios for each condominium unit to provide private usable open space for each homeowner. There was a concern with the lack of parking within the development and as I, as I indicated before, the total number of parking spaces would be 151 which exceeds the mixed use standard which would be 116. The difference is 35 additional parking spaces. However, the goal of the developer was to meet our multifamily residential standards. That's the, the reason why the site provides the 151 spaces. And finally, distribution of the guest parking spaces was a concern of the planning commission so the site plan was modified in order to disperse the guest parking in order to provide an evenly distributed parking field within the, the project. With that being said, staff is recommending the planning commission adopt the attached resolutions, recommending the city council approve mitigated negative declaration, a general plan amendment, a zone change, site development plan, condominium housing permit, as well as a tentative subdivision map to construct 47 condominiums on the subject site. That concludes staff's report. The developer is here and prepared to provide the planning commission with a brief presentation. Once the developer is done with that brief presentation, the developer as well as staff is here to answer any questions the commission might have.
Thank you. We have got some questions for you before we hear from the developer. Commissioner Rosler, please.
You probably can't answer this, so probably John and Patsy might need to answer, but how did we end up with a church in a C1 zone in the rural residential designation? Like I said.
That property has been designated commercial and zoned rural residential for as long as I've known. When the church was built there, there was acknowledgement of the C-zone. When we updated the general plan in 2012, we left all the general plan designations in place for the most part unless we were recommending changes. So in some areas of inconsistency, they weren't picked up, frankly should have been, but that's why it's there.
Okay. So, a general plan amendment tonight basically cleans up the general plan and the zoning and, and brings us into consistency on the property?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rosler, could you put up your slide again, please, that showed the designations of the surrounding areas? What was commercial, what was? One before.
We do have apartments to the east as well as a commercial retail development at the corner of South Melrose and Live Oak, as well as the shopping center across the street to the west, as well as another additional retail center to the northwest.
So what is the land use designation for the residential that's just opposite this? Are they mixed use as well?
So, if we look here, you're looking at, for a general plan designation, you're looking at high-density residential. And in terms of zoning, it's actually located within the Shadow Ridge specific plan, excuse me.
This project is within?
No, the property to the east that we're, you were referring to.
Why, why mixed use? Frankly, I'm concerned because of other projects we've had that are mixed use when this has got no component of mixed use on it. Why not just a residential designation of X amount of units per acre and?
Well, I think the intention of the developer was to do condominiums on the site. In order to make the project work, it would be required to be developed as a three-story product. Our multifamily residential standards limits the developer to two stories and a maximum height of 35 feet. So in order to accommodate the, the goal of the developer and to provide the product before you tonight, it would be required to provide a three-story product and as I indicated before, that's a height of 40 feet. So, that's the reason for the mixed use zone request. Again, the, the developer recognizes the fact that parking is a concern of the city and, and the planning commission and that's why, in fact, they parked it at the, the standard RM standards for parking. However, the height is the issue and that's the reason why they requested the mixed use zone standard.
Okay. Commissioner Carroll?
Oh, thank you. I found the answer to the question I had in the report as we were going along here.
Commissioner Garrettson?
This is proposed at three stories. How far do you have to go to find another three-story facility, at least a mile away? Correct?
At least.
So how does this fit in to the surrounding area? When you have a massive three-story facility around single-story homes?
Well...
I'm talking about compatibility.
I think if I can get a site plan, I can probably describe it a little bit better. What the developer's done here is provided extensive setbacks along the edge adjacent to the residential project to the east. They've expanded the, the setback to 26 feet and you can see that they included the parking which actually brings a majority of the project in to provide a substantial setback along that edge. Based on the roof elements and the break of the, the roof itself, I think they've done a, a, a successful job of trying to massage the project into the existing environment that we have there today.
But if you, if you look at the surrounding areas, there, there's single-story facilities or there're two-story and we're going to plop a big massive three-story facility right here if this is approved, correct?
It would be three stories, that's correct. And, and I guess, I guess the response would be that if it was zoned RM, that you're looking at a maximum height of 35 feet. So really, in terms of massing, you're only looking at an additional five feet. So in terms of height itself, you're looking at an additional five feet up to 40. However, it is a three-story product rather than two-story that's permitted in the RM zone.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions from the commission, we'll hear from the developer. Who wants to speak? Tony, Alan, all of you?
I'm Tony.
Okay, Tony.
I'm Alan.
I have the others here.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Tony Arnest, correct?
Yes, Tony Arnest. I represent the applicant, Wilmington Residential, and I want to thank staff, Michael Rosler and John Conley for their attentive work with us over the last year on this project, along with staff in general that worked very hard to resolve a number of different complicated and challenging civil engineering issues in order to make this the site that you see today. I think I can address some of the comments that were made with some additional slides. So again, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this this evening, and hopefully a few additional pictures will help to show some perspective on what this will look like, both in terms of looking down on it, looking around it, and looking at it from all four sides as you sort of, you know, drive around the streets that surround this particular asset. The first thing we wanted to comment on, in addition to staff's presentation, is what our vision for this project was. As you know, this was a church site, the Church of Christ Scientists. The church was unable to continue its operations at this location due to economic and other considerations, and sought an opportunity to leave this location and go somewhere else. We did a lot of extensive review as to what the site could be used for, and because of the unique nature of how the site is situated, a number of different options other than residential didn't make a lot of sense, both from the brokerage community input that we got, as well as our own demographic analysis. Wilmington Residential is 90 years old today, and we, as an organization, have a lot of experience in trying to evaluate what we're going to put and where we're going to put it and how it's going to be, you know, presented. So the thought was that, from, oops, I don't like, excuse me here, there it goes. The thought was from our vision that we wanted to do an entry-level product that would appeal to wide range of the segment of prospective homebuyers who may want to live and work in the city of Vista. A lot of these homebuyers didn't want a single-family home. They wanted to live in a condominium townhome environment. They liked the idea of having verticality because it allowed them to have a garage on the first level, a bedroom on the first level, your living arrangements on the second level, and the bedroom arrangements, the primary bedroom arrangements on the third level. And it allowed for square footages to provide for a three- and four-bedroom count, which is something that at this price point that I'll mention to you in a minute, was very attractive to this particular demographics. So we're focused on the high fours to mid fives, which in this area would be, I think, an attractive price point for this size product, the square footages and the bedroom count. The quality of construction is something that Wilmington is very concerned about, given its history and its reputation, and we wanted this project to be architecturally and aesthetically pleasing to each resident, as well as its incorporation in the surrounding community at large. The creation of a well-designed, interactive community environment was also paramount. We created this project to be very walkable, to be very connected, both vertically and horizontally, if you will. You can walk anywhere around this project, through it, across it, and you would be able to reach all corners of the project in a way which we thought was very interactive. The project promotes this walkability within the community, and it allows for walkability to the surrounding commercial neighborhood, which is a huge plus for a lot of people who live in attached or higher-density housing. We did have the opportunity to talk with the owner of Burger King next door, both the franchisee as well as the underlying landowner. They were very supportive of the project and look forward to its development. 7-Eleven said the same thing, and as we walked around a variety of the other commercial tenants in the various projects on the peripheral, obviously, their recognition of the possibility of people walking into their business without having to drive was a pretty exciting opportunity. As staff indicated, the community amenities are substantial. For a project of this size, we normally wouldn't see the amount of amenities that you see in this particular project, and I won't go through all of these, but just simply to highlight that, you know, we do have the pool, spa, fire pit seating area, covered seating, a large turf area, picnic areas with gas barbecues, large gathering areas. Each unit gets its own private patio out by the front door. It's walkable. It has enhanced driveway and entry pavement materials, which I think are very attractive, and the additional parking, I think, will solve some of the concerns that planning commission had. This slide, I think, is also important to note. One of the public members that we spoke with early on in the process asked the question of what contribution of additional traffic would this project create? And I got to thinking about it, talking with our traffic engineer, the Chen Ryan Group, which is here this evening should you have questions, as to if the church were there and it were fully functioning, what traffic would it generate? And how would that compare with this project's proposed generated traffic? Well, what this slide basically shows in a nutshell is that they're pretty similar. So we're really not adding additional traffic. We're really replacing the existing traffic that would be with the church were it fully operational with a product that provides pretty much the same traffic input. So I thought the graphic was an easy way to show in illustration rather than just articulate the words. This site, I think, is one that really shows the orientation of the project to the larger community. There was a question at one point as to how it would look or how it would fit into the community as a whole. It is not invasive. It is certainly a reuse of the site, but I think it shows that as you look down on it, it's not an invasive use such that it stands out on its own, you know? It is shocking from that perspective. But there's a couple of other ways I want to show that, if I may. This is the view along Live Oak. If you were driving up and down Live Oak today, this is what you'd see. This is a computer-generated picture done through computer generation, much the same way we do when we add things into movies. And you can see that when we add the product that we're going to propose for approval tonight, the first view on the top shows what it would look like if you were driving up and down at that edge condition. The first, the first image shows the trees as they would be approximately one year after development, and then the bottom view shows the trees fully mature and how that would then present to a pedestrian or driver coming up and down the street. So again, it's not something that's going to be on a hill looking like it's a stark product without some sort of blend, both architecturally and from a landscape perspective into the, into the surrounding area. The same perspective can be seen as you look from Buena Vista, from the shopping center across Buena Vista, looking south towards the area where the church is currently located, and the top screen shows that. The second screen shows when the buildings are built, which you would see from that perspective. Again, it, the massing is somewhat hidden by the fact that it's deep into the project. This would be the corner of Buena Vista and South Melrose, where the 7-Eleven is on the corner there. Again, the top image shows what it looks like now, and the second image shows, as you can see over towards the far right, the top of the rooftops there that would be for those buildings at those locations. Again, it's, it's, the massing doesn't stand out like people might think. Same perspective from the corner of Live Oak and South Melrose Drive. Again, looking straight up at the top, you can't see much of anything other than trees in the, in the lower commercial establishments that's there, but as you look towards the center of the project, you can see the rooftops, but they're, again, well insulated into the project because of the location where the project is situated. This slide basically gives you, I think, a classic reference to buildings versus open space. As staff correctly indicated, the landscaping represents 37% of the overall space, which is pretty substantial, but this actually shows you the green areas that are all the open space areas compared to the white, which is the streets and the drive aisles, and the reds, which represent the buildings. So it's a pretty spread-out product that allows for a lot of open space, green landscaping, and livability. This slide, I think, is to represent that there was a question about separation of buildings originally when the project was presented. Many of the buildings were pretty close together, not more than about 10 feet apart. To resolve a number of issues and challenges, both from a civil engineering standpoint for water quality, as well as from a livability standpoint, and to gain greater separation between the buildings, the number of units was reduced to accomplish this. And I'd like to bring up Alan Scales from KGGY to comment a little bit about the architecture and answer any questions you might have about that, because one of the questions that came up early on in the early design review, as well with comments from, from city council, was what the building would look like in terms of its articulation. They didn't want a flat, square box on four sides. They wanted all four sides elevated, and they wanted all four sides to represent a lot of movement in and out. So if I can bring Alan up here to offer a couple of comments on that.
Good evening. I'm Alan Scales with KGGY Group. We're the architects and planners. As Tony mentioned, I'd like to give you a brief overview of the architecture and, of course, field any questions you may have. Really, just to start, there was a comment about contextual fit. We did look at bringing a style of architecture that felt like it fit in the community. So lots of other examples of Spanish-inspired architecture. As staff pointed out, this is a slightly modern interpretation, but really tied to a historical precedent of a Spanish-style architecture. And before we get into the detail, and that's really the goal of this slide that you see in front of you, is giving you the overall shot, but obviously highlighting the numerous details that go into the finer level detail of the building itself. When we start a building like this, what we really look at is massing and kind of layer in the detail from there. The goal with a three-story building is to try to articulate that facade and break it down into smaller pieces. So that starts with simply the roof line, the eve and the ridge line, and then also breaking the building into smaller vertical components, so you get a rowhouse type of look. That is also complemented in the color schemes. On site, we do have three different color schemes. They're warmer, earth-tone, Spanish-style color schemes. The idea is that we're creating a little bit of contrast in the variety of colors. You, you really are highlighting the break in the row home or the ownership of the home itself. As you see on the board here, the eve line, in my opinion, is probably the most important piece of this. Clearly, the ridge line follows, but the eve line is really where you're experiencing the building as a pedestrian or a passerby. You're looking up at it, clearly, no matter what vantage point you're at. But it was really important for us to articulate that eve line and move it up and down, not only creating some vertical movement up and down, but also some horizontal. So there's some play in the wall planes in the architecture, varies from probably zero to five feet of depth, moving in and out, and a little bit of the up and down to give you that animation and really articulate that street scene. We also move into some single-story and two-story massing elements that bring a pedestrian scale to the architecture, really rallied around the front doors, the porches, and so forth. The patios, as Tony mentioned, are sort of a foreground element or a part of the entry sequence as you move into the front door of the house itself. The finer level of detail, as you can see, is really centered around, or I should say gathered around, the image here, shows you that finer level of detail. We've articulated and enhanced this architecture on all four sides, such that we have enhanced sill details, awnings. We are looking at sculpted corbeling details that happened under cantilevers. There's, I think there was a mention to patios that occur in front of each of these front doors. Each of these homes also have a second-floor balcony that are immediately adjacent to the living space, and so that provides a deep-set shadow line to the architecture. So you're getting some subtractive elements as well to the architecture. You can see quickly in the, in the rendering several points on the front elevation here where you'll get wrought iron railings. Those are the balconies. Those balconies, again, are connected directly to the living space, internal to the home. Beyond that, we have some accents and shutter details that provide a contrasting color. I mentioned the awnings earlier. That gives you the same sort of impact, contrasting and contrasting color and material change as well. And then, of course, the red rooftops, really characteristic to the Spanish-style architecture. There was mention to the building height at 40 feet 6 inches. That is the tallest point of the building, which is the ridge line in the middle. If you look at this rendering, there is some movement. And so I think it's important to note that the movement in that vertical goes from about 36 foot 6 inches up to the 40 foot 6. So the lower elements of that roof are actually just slightly over that 35-foot threshold. But again, the goal was, rather than having just a straight line, to get that articulation moving up and down. Furthermore, into the discussion about the pedestrian-level experience at the eve line, these eve lines are plus or minus 30 feet. So I think there's, there's really more of an experience of the edge or the height at that eve line, not so much at the ridge line. Those ridge lines recede away, so the only point that's at 40 feet is just that point. There's a sloping roof. You can see that. You've seen these things before. But you're really sloping from about 30 feet at the front or the edge up to that 40 or 36-foot height. Beyond that, if you have any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer them.
Do you have a question? Commissioner Garrettson? Sure.
Several questions, actually. One, how many people will this pool accommodate? I mean, is it a kiddie pool? Is it a full?
It's not an Olympic-sized pool, but I don't, off the top of my head, remember the exact dimensions, but it's a medium-sized pool that would accommodate what you would see in most small apartment-type settings. So it's not small, it's not large, it's medium.
Okay. Question number?
Not a diving pool. It's a swimming lap pool, play pool, that kind of condition.
And you're putting on fabric awnings?
On the building? Correct. Yeah, there are awnings.
How long do they last? Five years?
No, it would be typically, we're using a sun umbrella material, so you'll, you'll get at least 10 years out of a material out of that. It really depends. There are different spec levels in terms of the durability of a material, but it is a, a material intended for exterior use. You'll see this type of material in all sorts of retail-type establishments, other multifamily projects as well.
I just see these awnings downtown Vista, and I see all shades of faded and ugly. And I would be concerned about whether that's going to be the case here. You know, three or four, five years down the road, we're going to see ugly awnings as people drive by.
Well, again, we do have the expectation of a homeowners' association that will want to maintain the, both the maintenance and the look of the product to maintain its value. So there's a budget that would be set up for these sort of things, should they have to be replaced.
All right. One, one more question. The driveway that goes from this area out to Melrose?
Go back to the pictures here if I may. The, the access is, if you came out of the project, you would turn right and go to Buena Vista. You could either go right or left on Buena Vista. Going left would take you to South Melrose, or you could go basically straight, which would go by Burger King between the two.
You could go straight. Is that a normal sidewalk there on both sides or one side?
That would be normal.
Because that's really important, because people who live here that go to Rancho Buena Vista High School are going to come out through, right by Burger King.
Yes.
Yeah, so the sidewalk that you're talking about, yeah, it's just north of Burger King on the southerly edge of that driveway, and in fact, it is a four-foot sidewalk that would span from that all the way to, to South Melrose.
So what about from the edge of this property to where that sidewalk starts?
I think there's a V-ditch that, that runs along the edge of that parking lot, and then ultimately it deadends to the, the, the walkway. But in terms of the link there, there isn't a link.
How about the sidewalk, if you come out of the property and turn right to go over to, let's say, the, the Italian restaurant there? What?
So.
Is there a sidewalk up that way?
Yeah, it's on the, on the westerly edge of that driveway, running parallel to the 7-Eleven building.
So there is full sidewalk all the way around, that if you come out of this property, you can get? you can get to Live Oak, or not Live Oak, but Buena, Buena Creek or Buena Vista and to Melrose on a sidewalk?
There actually is a bit of a disconnect because coming out of the site, you'd have to go up the driveway, probably 100 feet before you would get past that driveway that you can see in the aerial here. And that's where the sidewalk begins on the, on the westerly edge.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Jackal, you have a question?
Thank you. Two things I'd like to thank you for, to start off with, and first is the simulated views that you provided for us of, you know, now and in a few years and so forth. I wish everybody would do that. It was really helpful. The second one is I am so thankful that you used the multiple, multifamily parking standards than the mixed use. That, that is terribly nice. Thank you. Couple of things I wondered about. What about trash pickup?
We had spoken with the, the agency that picks up the trash for this location and it would be garage stored, put out on the day of pickup. The trash truck would come through, pick them up as they normally would-
For each, each house and garage.
Correct. There's no trash compactors or central facility trash. So it would be normally as it would be expected in most similar types of condominium projects where the, the bins are stored in the garage.
Okay. With three and four-bedroom units, there are probably going to be children. And I, I also thank you for all the open space areas that you have provided. But what about more active play areas for younger children?
The plan, as you, as you see, was sort of contemplating that, but rather than put in a half-basketball court, which is noisy, and some other considerations, we tried to go more to the passive use than that type of use, considering that there were other facilities, not a very far distant drive or walk from this facility that they could go and do that. Some of the complaints we oftentimes hear from residents is that when you do have the harder, active, like basketball court situations, that it, it promotes skateboarding, it promotes noise, it promotes a different level of, you know, interaction with the livability of the community. So we thought we would go in this direction, which seems to be the feedback we get from many of our buyers who, you know, purchase in this type of product.
Okay. But younger children, maybe like a tot lot or, or a more active play area?
Well, that could be incorporated into the grass area as well. I mean, this, this plan shows what we're proposing, but we can add or modify it accordingly as we go through our, our process after today.
In one, one letter that was received with questions worried about the residents parking in the, the surrounding retail shopping areas.
Correct.
Now, you will have an HOA?
Yes. We've had extensive conversations with at least Burger King and 7-Eleven regarding that and with staff regarding the objective of the parking standard and what the objective was relative to the livability of the unit and how it would be parked and used. HOAs generally, and this would be an example of that, will have a requirement that the residents use the garages as garages. There will be storage in those garages, of course, 90 square feet is a minimum, but at the end of the day, that's where they need to park their cars and that is enforced by the HOA. The guest parking is supposed to be parked in the guest parking locations. Should someone want to park on a street or somewhere else or in some other lot, then that's an enforcement issue. And the HOA can't be, you know, burdened with trying to protect that situation, but certainly if people were complaining that people from this community were parking somewhere else, that's an enforcement opportunity. But we believe that the standard is designed to try to provide the parking onsite for the residents and their guests. Beyond that, and the HOA requirements that they use the garage for parking, I'm not certain there's much more we could do from a, from a development standpoint.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
Yes, you made the comment that there are other facilities close by. There, there are no other facilities close by that kids have access to. Rancho Buena Vista High School is totally closed off during the school hours and after school hours. So where are these other facilities?
I'm thinking of local parks. There are some parks in the area.
Two, three miles away.
Granted.
We have a question from our, one of our student commissioners. Come on up.
I actually attend Rancho Buena Vista High School and my concern with the project is that I, I pass by this Burger King and 7-Eleven all the time. I gas up at 7-Eleven. And after school every single day, I see tens of students, maybe 50 students, going into the parking lots, waiting for their parents to pick them up. And I'm concerned that if there's no gate on the community, then it'll invite some bad students to come and enjoy the swimming pool. I know people that do that all the time to other communities. If there's a fence, then they'll just jump the fence and hop into the pool. I like the, the plan, but there's definitely some safety issues that are concerning because it's a, it's a 7-Eleven and a Burger King in an awkward space. So if you do add a gate, then there's going to be cars waiting in that loop right here and it's going to be, it's going to be congesting that specific area. And there are no sidewalks going towards the, like on, on the northbound part of, going towards Buena Vista road. And also, not to invalidate the traffic engineer's assessment, but I haven't seen that church open its gates in a year. And it says that it has 350 daily, 350 daily visits, but I have not seen 350 cars.
Yeah, they were using that as an example. If the church today was still active, this is what you would expect. So they were just using it as a comparison.
All right. And I think that's all my concerns.
Great. Thank you for your comments.
Would you want us to respond?
Please.
Okay. Not every community of this nature is gated. There are many number of reasons for that. One is the queuing factor. We have to take a look at the way in which the queuing would work on both sides of the gate. And given the nature of the common uses that this private driveway facilitates, it didn't make sense to us to do that. The other part of it is, one of the things we're trying to do is to make a somewhat entry-level opportunity for home buyers that want to get into a product like this and, and be able to afford to live there. We try to keep the HOA dues down to a substantial, as substantially as we can. And gates and the maintenance on gates and repairs on gates is often a very expensive feature. So it's nice to have a gated community, but a lot of the communities, they turn them off. They don't want them, they don't need them. But that was our, our vision or thought process for leaving it ungated. We believe that in our experience, there's a lot of eyes on the street in these communities and they know who the residents are and they tend to, you know, supervise their own, their own community. I can't say that someone wouldn't hop a fence and I certainly can't say that someone wouldn't come in and try to use the pool, but I do think that as a community, they tend to police themselves pretty well and would be aware of that or be concerned about that if it was raised at a homeowners association meeting, which you're going to have every month.
And I'm assuming that the standard applies where there's always fencing around the pool and keyed entrance to get-
That's a good point. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I think another point in that regard is, again, it's for-sale housing. So you have homeownership, you have pride of ownership, you have eyes on the street. So there is a certain level of self-policing. If there were to be ruffians about, there would be some of, certainly a call pretty quickly if there was an issue.
The last thing I wanted to mention regarding that is there is a difference in elevation between the project, the commercial that is below it, and the residential to the south, which is the apartments. You'd have to climb up into this location and it would be very difficult to do from the south or from the west. The Burger King location is probably the one point where I could envision that happening. The church situation on the other side has substantial retaining walls and that would be, again, a more difficult entry point to try to do that. But I, I just thought I'd add that last comment. It's not a completely flat contiguous topography. It has a lot of elevation changes from one site to the other.
Yeah. Yes. Commissioner Rosler?
Our student commissioner raises a good point about security. Will there be onsite management of the, of the project or through the HOA property management?
Well, again, I would envision that there would be. Most associations do have property management.
Right. But is it going to be onsite or?
I wouldn't envision for a project this size, that's probably the likely choice. But I'm just being honest with you. I, I don't know.
Okay. One of the things that we've been doing here-
It's not like we have a leasing office, as you might have, for example, in an apartment.
Okay. One of the things that we've been doing here over the last couple of years is requiring a parking management plan as a condition of approval. And that management plan would require that residents park in their garage, not use it for storage as you-
We support that.
Okay. All right. Super. Thank you.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
Yes, I have a question for staff and it relates to what is happening with the other churches there in terms of future development? Because that'll have a big impact on this too, as it relates to traffic and potential parking problems on the street. Because I, I understand that that other church is going to be coming before the planning commission to look at condominiums. So that could have an impact on this decision.
So as of right now, the only thing in the near vicinity of this property would be the West Baptist Church located along Buena Vista Drive, just north of the site. There'll be an early design review application before you, probably in February, late February. The developer of that site is looking at doing a detached condominium unit project. I think it's a total of 45 units on about 4.81 acres. It equates to 9.5 dwellings per acre. So it'll be somewhat similar to the property just to the south of that site. So a different type of product, a detached condominium-type product would resemble more of a single-family home product rather than something like this.
Will he be wanting to go mixed use? He, she? Or what's the land designation for that project?
I think existing, they're looking for an RM. They're looking for an RM standard on that, that site zoning, excuse me.
Mr. Garretson, are you-
No problem. I, I just think if we're looking at traffic and parking, because if parking's going to overspill onto Buena Vista, it's also going to overflow from that one. And now you got all those single-family homes in between that are going to get squeezed big time on parking.
I think, do keep in mind that this isn't a mixed-use zone or mixed-use parking requirement they're meeting. They're actually meeting the RM standard. So this is the higher parking standard for this type of product. So in fact, they are, they are meeting that higher standard and, and I think that was the, the direction the planning commission was pushing the developer to go. So that's the, their intent in terms of meeting that expectation.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of questions. On the traffic chart, you've used the comparison of what the church daily count would be.
And again, these are not exact numbers. They're not, you know, they're more, they're taken from standards, as was earlier expressed in the previous presentation. Traffic engineers use a great deal of historical data and standards that they use for applying certain equations to try to figure this out. They use the square footage of the building. They use the number of stalls that are currently on the site. And then they extrapolate that with standards that what churches that are referenced in their data typically show. So it's, it's an extrapolation of using historical information and also the application of the site itself. And so I can't say that it's exactly 360, but I can say that, that their representation was that's a typical example of what they would expect based on the square footage, the number of parking stalls, the number of people that they would see there.
The real situation, the reality though, is there's probably three or four churches in North County in Vista that probably have activities taking place on campus five, six days a week. And so just to offset, there will be an impact on traffic that, that Melrose is not accustomed to. That was just a minor point. In your cross-section, you've got, you've got 10-foot basically from floor-to-floor heights and then you've got about an eight-foot attic space. Is that where you're putting mechanical systems in or what's the, why so much attic?
I, I don't believe it's quite eight feet. It does vary. As I mentioned before, there's a lot of movement on that, that ridge line. But yes, that is correct. There will be an FAU in the attic space itself. So it's being used for that purpose.
Okay. Because of the height being 40 foot, six, a horizontal unit's going to be 30 inches in height. So there is some potential to lower that building height by two to four feet easily.
Yeah. The 36, six that we show on there, again, there's movement on that ridge. The 36, six will also accommodate the FAU as well. So the movement is, is creating articulation rather than one straight ridge line. We are trying to get a little bit of aesthetic value out of that movement.
Some of the end elevations seem a little bit void of articulation and I think it would be nice to see some embellishment of that. Also, you're proposing an S-tile roof. It's really unclear in your exteriors, how are you going to detail that end of that S-tile? Because you've got your plaster walls coming up and it looks like it's coming over the edge.
That's correct.
Oftentimes, what you can do is take barrel tile. You can overlap it on the S-tile. It would really enhance those elevations.
That is the intent, is to have that wrap. We, we don't want to put a barge board. We don't want a piece of wood that's visible. So what you'll have is the stucco wall effectively run up to that tile and the tile will wrap that edge. So you will see the tile wrapping the, the edge of the roof.
Okay. Because it's not shown in the exterior, but that's, it really kind of adds a lot of shadow line that would enhance your drawing. The garages, they're small, they're what I guess you can expect in entry-level condos. 16-foot wide garage doors. Trash area is, is going to be tight. What staff's history been on units like this where the personal trash cans are contained within the garage rather than having a trash location pickup where there's two or three locations in a property of this side size where the truck makes three stops instead of 20 stops?
History-wise, I couldn't give you any background, but Patsy, I don't-
I think it varies from project to project. I have not personally heard of any negatives as far as if it's individually collected from the units themselves or if there's a common trash area. EDCO is really the, the, the agency that deals with the issue as far as for them, how it works, the trucks, the pickup, the times, the regularity and all of that. But it really depends on a project-by-project basis. There's not a set formula that one needs to follow. It really depends on the developer, the type of project, the size in EDCO and how they operate it.
And we did meet with EDCO, submitted our plans to EDCO, and that was the direction that they selected.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Let's get some input from the, from the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for allowing us to present.
Steve Ort, please, followed by Joe X-line. Please give your name, state your address.
Steve Ort, 1553 Mylorca Drive, Vista. Steve Ort, 1553 Mylorca Drive, Vista. I actually live several blocks away from the project. I'm actually here to support it. The tax base alone for projects like this are invaluable. The Vista, I've seen it grow over past 30 years. I've been a resident here in Shadow Ridge. What I'm actually hoping is, you know, more good quality restaurants will come into the Shadow Ridge area. We've seen some come and go in the last, you know, 10 years, but once again, any, any project that promotes a good tax base, I'm all for. As far as the traffic on Melrose, I've seen it come and go and Melrose didn't, didn't go through. Home Depot wasn't there. The school itself promotes a lot of traffic, so I don't think that this project is going to really put that much more of a stress on Melrose. You know, it obviously has some traffic impacts right now, but I think the school itself puts more of it than anything. Traffic is coming from Palmyra Port Road cutting across to get onto 78. I think all in all, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joe X-line, please, followed by Kathy Bagwell.
Hello, Commissioners, I'm Joe X-line. I live at 1402 Andor Court, which if you follow that Live Oak Road, it's the first subdivision there, the, the, just to the north of that. And I have some concerns. I mean, I'm glad that it doesn't have any outflow onto Live Oak Road for pedestrians or traffic. The concerns that I have is that, you know, the height of the building is like, I was told this is 35-foot ceiling, so that's higher than the ceiling. On top of that, there's a seven-foot berm. When you're standing on Live Oak, there's a seven-foot of soil and there's going to be four feet of wall probably and 35 feet of building. I mean, that's quite a substantial, you know, piece of sticking out of the ground right there in that, that piece. Just to the north of this, there's open space currently. I'm assuming that that's going to even look more like a wall where there's going to be that, that straight wall, retaining wall there and then another 30 feet of building. So also during the traffic times, excuse me, during the traffic times, the kids walk up that little driveway and there's no sidewalk across the Burger King parking lot. So they're in the street there when they walk. Also, there's a, that little junction there where it goes in the driveway that you see there in the picture, there's really no traffic control. So be cars coming from both directions trying to get in that driveway and out of it and I'm concerned with some issues there. Also coming, the nor, when you go out that driveway to the top, I wait in 7-Eleven, coming out of 7-Eleven in the morning just to get out onto Buena Vista for probably two lights sometimes and with that additional traffic, there could be some problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Bagwell, followed by Nikki Hobson, please.
Hi. I would just say that Nikki Hobson is not able to attend tonight, but she's in favor of the project. Kathy Bagwell, 1862 Turnberry Drive, Vista. I live in Shadow Ridge Greens and I will just make a comment that, about the EDCO. My community is a, basically condos and we have individual pickup, so they are attached units and we've never had any issues whatsoever with the pickup on the individual basis with EDCO. And I have a typical two-car garage and I have no problems putting the large-sized barrels in my garage, so I don't think that there should be a problem that way. I would like to say that I am also speaking on behalf of South Vista Communities and a little disclaimer here that Stephanie Jankel has not attended any of the meetings that the Wilmington Group has met with us four times and they had a community meeting as well back at late, I think it was late 2015. Every time that Wilmington has come to meet with our group, our members, our board members, we have found them to be very receptive to our comments and our input. One of the major ones was about parking and I think they have more than adequately addressed that with lowering down. We spoke to them about density, we spoke to them about the parking issues to make sure that there was very adequate and I think they've met that exceedingly well. We are very pleased that this happens to be a for-sale condo project as opposed to apartments, which are also needed, of course, in the community, but we have just gone through, obviously, a very challenging time with the Breeze Hill. So this project is something that I think will be attractive. I understand people's concern about height, but it's one of those things where once the trees grow, I don't think it's going to become that big of an issue and once you get used to things, sometimes they just sort of disappear and you don't really notice them. The property, I think it's a great setting for it because it does set back on all sides, basically, so you really don't see it like you would Avalon, hate to bring it up. And the access, being that there's access off of Melrose and also Buena Vista, I think that's excellent for this property. And as far as it's, you know, maybe staying commercial, I don't see that because we have buildings, suites that are open for rent now for lease that, in the communities right around the commercial buildings. I don't see it as being something that would be a commercial place. I just don't see it. And I think that we have, they will sell quickly. I have a 93-year-old cousin who's been in real estate for years, she wants to buy one because it's in walking distance to stores, to services, to Buena Vista Park, which is not that far away to walk, and, and the high school. So we would really like to see this project approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Look, I do have a speaker slip, excuse me, speaker slip for Nikki Hobson and it, she does indicate she is in favor of the, the project. Next up, Leonard Finkel, followed by Cliff Kaiser.
My name's Leonard Finkel. I live at 1979 Oxford Court. I don't know if you people are familiar with Stratford Place right off of Melrose and my real concern is the traffic. I've lived in Vista for 20 years and I moved across the street from a driving range. I'm a golf writer and that became hundreds of condos and, you know, in the last 20 years there's a lot of development, I understand that. But there are times where my little street, if, with the traffic backed up from almost the Home Depot to 78, if I don't get courtesy from a driver, I just sit there and wait and my wife is the same way. I have real concerns about the traffic. It's, I, do you people drive at, at rush hour, late afternoon or early morning? It can be brutal and that's my real concern. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff, followed by Kim Cameron.
Good evening, Commissioners. Again, same comment that I had for the previous public hearing. The city has a history of changing and the, the general plan at a whim almost and, and this is your opportunity to say no. Melrose has problems. This is going to add traffic to it. The fact that it might not add that much more traffic than a fully functional church, that's irrelevant. It's adding 360 more trips per day estimated on Melrose and that's, that's a problem. Breeze Hill development that everybody wrung their hands and says we can't stop that created a community uproar. Now, many of these community members think this is probably going to be okay, but you're not going to deny the fact that you're going to add traffic on Melrose. So the question becomes, maybe at a higher level, if it's not in the general plan, if it's not zoned for this, why? Right? Why do we have to do this? Why not just say, no, it's, this is not the time for it? The next time we get down to a general plan change and we reevaluate what the community wants and where it needs to go, maybe in five years or 10 years, that's the time to say, we're going to redesignate this property. But it seems like I mentioned before that we're just changing general plans and zoning at the whim of anybody that comes up and says, hey, I want to do this, I want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Cameron?
Hi, I'm Kim Cameron. I live at 1470 Fern Place, which is just like a block away from here off Buena Vista. The traffic on Buena Vista and the way they're going to route to go in and out of, I don't know if you guys have ever gone to 7-Eleven and tried to get out, especially around high school time, there's kids crossing, you can't make a left to go to Melrose unless somebody lets you in or you're sitting there for a really long. It's just a poorly situated spot because you have all these kids coming, walking through by Burger King and there's a sidewalk there, but then it's going to end and there's no sidewalk. I just, it's not a good thing. And then they say with the church, it's supposed to be the same amount. I live by St. Thomas Moore below it and I don't see all that action every morning and every night going there. Maybe Sundays and a couple other days, but never that much. And then three stories, it's already on a hill. I've lived here for 42 years, so, in the same house. So that place is on a hill and it is going to stick out. I just don't see any reason to have to do that, especially since Breeze Hill down the street just got approved. I mean, I just, it's just not a good thing. What else was there? And then the parking, it's going to be a problem. You already have people that are on Wesley Place just off Buena Vista behind Nucci's and they're parking on Buena Vista, but Buena Vista's such a narrow road and so highly traveled that now they can't park on the sides either, so they have problems. So it's just, it's not the right way and I think high school kids will be part of the problem because they're going to get hit. Because there's no, it's, why would you want to build something back? It's nice that it's back, but there's no good driveway. I mean, it already has a problem during traffic. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. We had a speaker slip for Carolyn Breger, but she can't be here, so she wanted to post that she is in opposition of, of the project. So that's part of our record. Next, Val Brown.
I just had a couple of comments. First of all, I wanted to thank Wilmington Homes for the way they showed up throughout this process. We would have given our eye teeth to work with Wilmington on the Breeze Hill project. They have been very courteous of, of community concerns. I know there's a lot of things that have come up tonight that, that still are concerns. That driveway reminds me a lot of what we have at CVS in Breeze Hill, but I will tell you, exemplary as far as having a community meeting that everybody could come to, they weren't asked to do it and they, they have listened. I will also say that I saw the first plans for this project and they were very attractive. I'm not really sure what's happened through the process, but it was a very nice-looking project. A question I have about cut-through traffic. Buena Vista is a cut-through from the 78 over to Melrose and I know that that was addressed generally, I guess, in the staff report, but more specifically in the MND. And I guess my question to staff would be, is if this project is approved, is there something specifically that will be put in the CIP to perform the improvements that go along with this to mitigate anything that would come with all of the new cut-through traffic? So those would be my comments at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no other speaker slips, so we close the public hearing. Mr. Arness, is there anything that you've heard that you, you or your team would like to rebut or make comment to before we proceed any further?
Sort of as a closing opportunity, I want to thank staff for a year's hard work. This project has been through three iterations. The first iteration was a different type of architecture, it was more modern. It was thought that perhaps it was not the right thing to fit into the flavor of Vista. It's like asking 10 people what they think about something, sometimes you'll get 10 different opinions. There were some who really liked it and some who thought we should stick more to a traditional Spanish or modern Spanish Santa Barbara, Tuscan type of look, but we went off in that direction through direction of staff feeling that that was the best way to go. We listened very carefully to public input, to community HOA input. We went through all of your comments through the study session, as was indicated by Mike. We've met with the council members several times to get their input and address their concerns and we believe that we have incorporated, if not all of them, at least the vast majority that were the subject of, you know, comments this evening. Diversity is a good thing in the sense that there's different types of people who want to live in different types of properties, who want to have a different type of lifestyle relative to, you know, the home that they choose. This may not be something that you see that often here in Vista. Three-story product is very popular in some communities, but it is a product we felt that fit well here for the reasons that the site is tucked back in. And we believe the photo simulations were done to illustrate that it's not going to be like a, a product up on a hill. It really does fit into the area. There is an edge condition along Live Oak, but we believe once the landscaping is fully mature, that it should not be something that you would notice other than the fact that you're aware that it's there. The most important thing from our standpoint was that the product be very articulated, it be very livable, it be very walkable and that it be adequately parked so that we wouldn't contribute to some of the issues that residents have mentioned before. We think there are ways to perhaps resolve that, but we're not certain that this project's introduction into the community will impact that in a serious way. So again, thank you for your consideration and we seek your support.
Thank you. Commissioners, does anybody have any comments that they would like to? Commissioner Garretson?
I would like to say that I'm generally opposed to this for several reasons. One is the mixed-use rezoning. Number two is the, the mass, the three stories, that I don't believe fits into the area. And three, the lack of sidewalks out to Buena Vista and to Melrose. I think that is going to create a very unsafe situation. So I, I think with the number of people that'll be going in and out potentially to the high school with this number of units, I think that lack of sidewalks is a major, major problem for me.
Commissioner Looney?
I too have concerns. As far as neighborhood compatibility, I think it doesn't work with the height and the density. I think residential use on that parcel works really well. The three-story structures along Live Oak are, in my opinion, don't match what we have going on on the other side of the street. We have two-story structures on the east side of Live Oak and those properties immediately adjacent to this property have been recessed three, two to four feet below the street level. So a 40-foot stall structure, I think is too much of a contrast and in that respect, I don't see it being compatible. The height, again, the height and density, I wouldn't, I would be more open to a two-story structure or even if you had two-story structures on maybe the perimeter units and stay with three-story on the very center core, I think that gives you some variety as well. And that's, those are my comments.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bell, please.
Thank you. I'm going to mirror the comments on mixed-use. I think it was a month and a half ago, we as Commissioners talked about changing the mixed-use zoning to limit it to actual mixed-use of commercial and residential. Am I correct in that? And that has not gone before the City Council yet? Okay. And so based on that alone, I, I have a problem with the island of mixed-use being put in this area of Vista. I think the closest mixed-use is Breeze Hill, correct? And even that is obviously contentious. I don't see the benefit of it. If I were to look at this as a hypothetical, I would say, what if the builder came in and had a residential request? It sounds like they've met almost all the requirements for residential, number of units, size, parking, except for the height of the building. And I don't see a valid reason to allow the exception here, even if it were a request for residential with a 40-foot roof as opposed to mixed-use- for residential with a 40-foot roof as opposed to mixed use, which it is now. So, that's where I'm at and I'm open to hearing alternative arguments to that, but that's my tendency at this point. Having said that, my issue is more with the status of the zoning in the city right now and not with the work you've done because it's clear that you have reached out to the citizens and have taken their input and that is invaluable. So, I know it means nothing, but it, I'm sorry I'm feeling this way right now with this specific project because it's clear you guys have put some serious work, not just into the design, but interacting with the community and we need more of that as builders come in. So, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. My comments are very similar to Commissioners Looney and Bell and I'm concerned about the mixed use. I'm concerned about the height. And so then I sit here and say, well, okay, so if we left it at commercial, now are we going to be getting ourselves into a situation like the CBS lot in that those commercial buildings were so far off the street that they're not noticeable and that's not good either? So, I think I'm leaning towards, I think the idea, and it would be easier for me to swallow as well if it were a two-story, but two-story and then having the center as three-story is, you know, Christmas tree-ish and that could work. I like the location and I think that from a consumer standpoint, because there is so much shopping and so many things that you can do nearby. But, so those are my comments. Commissioner Jackal?
Sounds like we all pretty much agree. I really wish that it could be two-story, but I think the two-story on the ends on Live Oak might work. The elevations on the ends need to be more articulated. I am worried about the sidewalks for, because I live not too far away from here and I see those high school kids just everywhere, so I am concerned about the sidewalks. And I really, that was one of the first things that stuck out to me is the mixed-use zoning and I really am nervous about that.
Commissioner Rossler?
I, going through the staff report, I had the same concerns about the mixed use. Why couldn't we designate it multifamily residential? Staff tells me that the reason for the mixed-use designation is for the height. I like the product that they're proposing. I, the fact that it's townhouses and for sales, I think is important, something that we need in the city. So, I'm wrestling with this one. Overall, I like the design of the project, what they've done with parking and the open space, I think is tremendous. This, I would point to this for the project last week or two weeks ago off of Palmaria Road. This has an appropriate amount of recreation space in it, I think. This is an example of that. So, I'm willing to accept the mixed use to get to the product, but I, again, if we do the rezone and the project goes away because they can't get it financed or for whatever reason, we've got another hunk of mixed use sitting out here on South Melrose. So, just my concerns.
Commissioner, student Commissioner Cranford, do you have any comments that you'd like to make this evening on this?
I do believe, I will be basically repeating much of what many of you commissioners have said. I believe that there is an issue with the mixed use here in this project and I believe that it truly stands out to me that there needs to be something done with sidewalk safety as Rancho Buena Vista High School is a very, very crowded high school with many students. And I just believe that we need to do some, take a measure in order to create more safety for them and that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you, Chairman. So, I like this site for a multifamily use. And the mixed-use zone is wearing thin on many people, I realize, but I'm willing to give it a pass in this project because they've addressed the parking. That gives us everyone so much heartburn to the higher standard. And they've also, also because the site is set back and tucked away and I think the applicant has demonstrated through the renderings that it's not going to be an eyesore on the top of a hill. It's going to fit in. And the architecture, I think they've done a good job with that. I was, I think, one of the people that really didn't have a problem with the more contemporary style, but hey, I guess, you know, Spanish tiles, fine too. So, they've, you know, and I do believe the walkability of the site. So, that's another reason I think it's a good multifamily site and it's not, it's not a super high density. It's 15 units per acre. I mean, we've seen some apartments come through with some pretty high densities and this is a homeownership project with 15 units to the acre and I think that's, I think that's okay for this area. So, those are my comments.
I have a question of staff. And it comes from a point that Commissioner Rossler made, that what if we do change the land use, excuse me, the zone change to mixed use and for some reason the project goes away? That mixed use is already connected with the land. Is that correct? And then where?
That's correct. If the city council, in fact, approves the ordinance for the zone change, it would change the zoning designation for the site, no matter if this project moves forward or not.
Is there any other way that we could not change the zoning to mixed use and give them a variance to get their building height up to 41 feet?
I think at this point, then they would have to provide a appropriate application for zone, for variance?
The reason, the reason that we package this up as a mixed-use zone project is because there's no way our code lets the developer get to a three-story product under the RM zone. It's just not permitted. It doesn't give the planning commission or the council that discretion in that zone. It's limited strictly to two stories of 35. It's important to note, if it is rezoned to mixed use, the density allowance is only 15 to the acre, so they couldn't go higher than 15 to the acre. That would still be a limitation on the property. But the parking requirements, the setbacks, all those things that are in the zoning today would apply to a future development if this were to fail to be built. But again, we are revisiting those standards based on the planning commission's direction, so it's an issue yet to be resolved with the council.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. I was just, Mr. Conley already mentioned that, but this is, this is proposed as MU15, so that, they couldn't come back at a higher density. It would still be, it would still be the 15 dwelling units per acre max, but what could potentially be lost is the give on the parking and landscaping and such that's been provided with this project.
Commissioner Rossler?
A question for staff. The access to the property comes off that private drive that goes between the Burger King and then goes up to Buena Vista. They have access rights to that, to that drive? That's correct. Okay. If we required them to improve that drive with sidewalks on both sides, they have the ability to do that? I don't have the answer to that question. Okay.
You're referring to sidewalks on the private property offsite?
Yes.
So, you could certainly condition that, but we couldn't guarantee that the developer would get the right from those private property owners to build those sidewalks. So, it's a condition we could hold them to evaluate and, you know, respond to staff during the construction document review, but we couldn't require the private property owner to give them those rights.
Right.
Commissioner Jackal?
Am I allowed to ask the applicant a question?
Sure.
In spite of the things that I said I was concerned about, overall, I really like the project. Is there any way that you could take, on the buildings along Live Oak, that you could take the end ones on each end of each building down to two-story?
Since I have the division president here and my boss, that's where I could ask him, I guess the short version would be that would require a redesign of the building. It would require going back through staff. I'd like to make the argument that, while I understand the point, you know, I'm not certain that tonight I can give you an answer as to whether or not that's functional, whether we can do it and what the result would be. I mean, we can approach it from any perspective. Are you suggesting that we, do you want to try to table this and come back another time?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I'm just...
I mean, I guess... They're shaking their heads saying that wouldn't work. The problem with development oftentimes, and I know I speak from the development community, but I've been doing this a long time and I recognize that the difficulty in trying to do these kinds of changes that you're suggesting at the last minute is not as easy as you think in the sense that we have, there's the structural aspects of the building, there's the civil aspects of the building, there's the architectural aspects, there's cost implications. I mean, the project has been brought to this point with all of those elements evaluated so that if it is approved, we could move forward and build it. These are difficult times in construction and in building and costs and financing and so forth, so we try to put these packages together in such a way as we can achieve an objective for everybody. But we recognize we made a decision to go in this direction because we had this vision and the vision was we had a market that is a very deep market and the market that we felt would be very good for this market to try to have people who could live and work in Vista, have the bedroom counts that they wanted, have a price point they could afford. And the best way to achieve that was with this particular type of design. And so, it's not that you couldn't do a two-story product, we just couldn't put the economics together in a way that, you know, I think would have achieved the result. So, we're not asking for compromise, we're just asking for your appreciation of our process, the thought process we went through to try to achieve what we have presented this evening.
Okay.
Chairperson Kramer, I might offer one suggestion to the commission that they could, you can possibly consider that might respond to the concern you have regarding the mixed-use zoning and its potential for a parking standard that's more relaxed than the standard that's been proposed. Given that there's a rezoning that's being contemplated, we could, assuming that the developer were willing to, to enter into a form of contract zoning with a recorded covenant, assuring that the higher standard would be met in the event that there's a residential development on the property. So, I'm not sure whether that would, you know, respond to the commission's concerns or whether it would be acceptable to the developer, but it is a potential way to address some of the concerns that the commission has been raising tonight.
I like it. Okay, we got a couple down here. So, is, Mr. Arnest, is that something that Wilmington is possibly willing to enter into? Do you understand our worries is that, I should say, that if Wilmington doesn't...
No.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Commissioners, Mr. Rossler, somebody want to make a motion or, those who are vocal? Well... Commissioner Rossler?
Why does this always fall to me? I like Mr. Stone's suggestion for the covenant. I'm not quite sure how to put that into the motion, but I would move that we approve, recommend approval to the city council of the mitigated negative declaration, the general plan amendment to mixed use, the zone change to mixed use 15 with the covenant, and approval of the site development plan condominium housing permit and tentative map for the 47-unit condo I would like, I agree. I think the project needs sidewalks out to Buena Vista Drive and on the, to Melrose. So, I would like to add that as a condition of approval of the site development plan and tentative map. If I remember how this works, if we put it on the tentative map, they have the obligation to go out and do it and if they can't get the other property owners to agree, then they come back to the city and say, "We tried, we couldn't do it" and the city has to waive the condition. If I got that right, Mr. Stone?
The choice is either the city waives the condition or condemns the rights to accomplish the condition.
Right. Okay. So, I would add the sidewalks and ask them to go make their best effort to work with the other property owners to get that. I'm open to other conditions.
Can these elevations?
I agree with the applicant on his reasons, if he went back and...
Not, not, just more articulation.
Okay. Yes, more articulation on the end, you know, I definitely agree with that. So, the end elevations facing the street, the public streets, need to be, have additional articulation and we'll leave that up to staff to figure that out for us. So, any other thoughts, comments?
And to...
Yes.
The covenant?
The covenant, yes.
Commissioner Carroll?
If we could clarify, this covenant is in regards to, for a residential development to hold to the...
RM parking standard?
RM parking standard.
Right. And a residential development would utilize the higher RM standard, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Rossler, would you entertain adding this other requirement regarding the parking management plan and specify in the parking management plan that two vehicles are required to park within the garage before the household's vehicles, extra vehicles beyond the two are allowed to park in the open areas?
Yes, that's acceptable.
I will second the motion.
Commissioner Looney?
So, the motion really isn't addressing any building heights?
Correct. Let the record show that it passes unanimously with, well, okay, yes. Let the record show that, uh, it passes unanimously with...
It passes on the...
Well, okay, yes, 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 thank you. On a four-to-three vote, with Commissioners Bell, Looney, and Garrettson voting no, opposing. Thank you. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
So, um, I'm trying to think if there's anything from the council's actions that, uh, needs to be reported, but I'm not thinking of anything. We have a new council member that's gonna get seated on the thirteenth of December. Um, there will be a little, uh, reception for Councilman Campbell, um, before the meeting at four-thirty, if anyone's interested in attending. Uh, we will hear the Vista-Palmar project at the council on December thirteenth, and the parking standards that came to you before. Um, we will not have any more planning commission meetings in, um, December, we're canceling the twentieth, and we're also canceling January third, so the next time we'll meet with the commission is January seventeenth, so I hope you all have a wonderful holiday and great Christmas and New Year. Um, and that's really all I have for now.
Good. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Rossler?
Done.
Done? Commissioner Bell?
Thank you. Um, two quick items. I wanted to thank the city for sending the Walker parking study.
Yes, so I did not...
Did you send that to anyone else yet?
I did not print it, I forgot today, but we did, based on Commissioner Bell's request, get a memo from, uh, Walker Parking that details how they evaluated the parking and what the standards were. I sent it to Commissioner Bell, I promised I was gonna give it to the commission tonight, but I did not, so I will email to all of you tomorrow, my apologies for that.
And just so it's clear in the minutes, my, um, objection or request originally was whether the parking study looked at parking outside of the actual lots, and they did. So, they confirmed in the report that they counted, if there was any doubt, they counted any cars in the vicinity for the numbers, so personally, that makes me feel a lot better trusting those numbers and judging in those areas. Um, the second issue for the city, I had a conversation last week with the owner of Wavelength Brewery, and I had a one-sided conversation where he told me a story, so take that with a grain of salt. This isn't a request or anything, but I wanted to pass it on in case there was an issue that anyone here was dealing with, there may not be. Um, he, I asked him what business was, and he was, said okay, but he's a little bit frustrated because of a tree outside of his window, and apparently, he's gone back and forth with a couple of departments in the city trying to get this tree either replaced or changed or something to allow more viewage of his sign. He's had people tell him several times over that they never knew he was there because they're walking between Belching and Mother Earth and the other restaurants, and the, the shop is recessed and, you know, the, there's also questions of sign design and, but that's another issue. Um, he was frustrated, and since he's in downtown and part of the downtown business area, I wanted to pass that along since I talked to him, but again, no, no requests, no, nothing on my part, I just wanted to make sure the city was aware that there was something, and he said his wife's an arborist who could easily get any kind of tree that you guys wanted, so take advantage of that if he's gonna offer.
Okay, well, I'll pass it on to our economic development folks.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Looney?
Um, just one question that I brought up several weeks ago about the, what I'll call the marijuana distribution center on Civic Center in Vista Way. They're doing great business. Um, so, what's the city policy on...
You're talking about the old sun tent building there next to the Palm Center where the pink and black curtains are?
Across from Chins.
Yes. Um, our city attorney's office has been working on those, I'll let Mr. Stone comment on that.
Um, the city has a pretty aggressive, um, campaign to, um, eradicate marijuana dispensaries which are not allowed under the city's zoning, and so, it starts off with providing notice and then, um, in general, in the event that the notice is not successful, there's, um, a criminal action that's there, brought to, um, help effectuate, um, compliance with the law. Uh, the businesses, uh, are very profitable businesses, and so, they very often are represented by attorneys, and it becomes, um, a protracted battle to, um, achieve compliance with our code.
So, if I get the right attorney, I can open any business that I wish within the city? I mean, taking the extreme?
No, there's, there's consequences, and, um, I doubt you would be willing to face the consequences.
Okay.
And, and definitely, there's been a, um, I don't personally handle them, but, um, there's been a very large number of successful closures, but then there's also been a number of, um, businesses that do open.
So, the bottom line is, we have been fighting every one of them. Um, we have, uh, they're all established illegally if they're open in Vista because we're not permitting any of them, but there is some time involved in processing the, both the property offenses and the criminal offenses, and so, we're getting to that point with that same distribution location, but we're not there yet.
How do you find them?
Uh, mostly by residence complaints.
Oh. I often wonder, um...
You can probably get online and find most of them, frankly, but we don't actively...
Oh.
In our office, the attorney's office does do that investigation, but we're getting most of our tips from people, businesses nearby.
Yeah, 'cause I know when I go to Bank of America on Santa Fe and I park in the lot, you look straight up, but there's a two-story building and there's a joint something or other, you know, and I always, you know, gee, I wonder, you know?
Yeah.
There's another one across from Cragan on South Santa Fe.
Uh, right, in the, uh, center near the bike shop there, we're aware of that one as well, yeah.
Yeah, they got a nice sign. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, guys.
I think we're adjourned, it's nine eighteen. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Garrettson?
Um, just, just one quick question. Uh, we get eight and a half by eleven, and we get these big prints. Is there any way we could consider something in between so it's a little bit easier to go use it here on the, uh, on the...
Sure. Um, you know, we have the option of doing eleven by seventeen. Um, the only issue with that is you don't get scale with that, so if you wanted to scale plans and identify distances, that kind of thing, you wouldn't have that option. We will probably still provide the full-scale plans, just because we want you to have that information, but we can certainly provide eleven-by-seventeen copies as well.
It's just a lot easier to work...
Or half-size sheets.
Half-size is work great, too.
Yeah.
Because the last applicant, um, sixty to seventy percent of his drawings didn't have the correct scale on them, so it, you know...
Understood.
I know these architects are...
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.